The public will be allowed, welcome to the Thursday, June 3rd, 2020-21 Public Hearing Board Workshop. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the Professional Development Center. Meeting room space, once the capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the meeting room. The Public Hearing Board Workshop will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on Board Docs located on the school's website at ebrschools.org/About. And we shall now have an invocation by School Board Member Jill Dyson with a pledge immediately following by School Board Member Darius Lannis.
You do the invocation.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District 9 President Hatman. District 4 Vice President Collins.
Present.
District 1 Mr. Blue. District 2 Mr. Lannis.
Present.
District 3 Mr. Howard. District 5 Ms. Ware Jackson. District 6 Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 7 Mr. Goday.
Present.
District 8 Ms. Bernard.
Present.
And we have a quorum. We shall now move forward with item C1, Presentation of the Proposed 2021-22 General Fund Budget. And we have a point of personal privilege before we start from Board Member Connie Bernard.
I just wanted to recognize former State Representative Mrs. Pat Smith who's in the audience tonight. Thank you for being with us. We really much appreciate your education advocacy over the years and tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and you may now begin.
Good evening, Dr. Narcisse and Board Members. This evening I will be presenting the Proposed 2021-2022 General Fund Budget. The Proposed 2021-2022 General Fund Budget includes staff recommendations for revenue and expenditures, and revenue projections based on the revised 2020-2021 budget approved in May of 2021. The financial summary for the general fund includes total revenues of $484.4 million, total expenditures of $482.2 million, a final balance of $2.2 million, and an ending fund balance of $56 million. As we have struggled to maintain a positive balance in the past several years, we are strategically using our dollars in additional funding. As a result, we will have a positive balance of over $1 million for the fiscal year. This chart shows that relationship between student enrollment and general fund staffing. The district is strategically placing staff in appropriate funding sources. As a result of this strategy, the district will begin to build a reserve in the general fund. The projected unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year will be $38.5 million. Unassigned fund balance is the fund balance that the district can use at its own discretion. Projected assigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year will be $17.5 million inclusive of inventory cost. Assigned fund balance is the funding that must be used for specific purposes. The total projected fund balance at 6/30/2022 is $56 million. As a percentage of general fund revenues, it is projected to be 12%. LDOE requires a 7.5% fund balance as a percentage of general fund revenues. This ensures that the district is financially stable and our fund balance is healthy. The district goal is 15%. The next slides will provide you information regarding our projected revenues for the next fiscal year. Total revenue is projected to increase by $16.9 million. Adverolum tax collections are projected to increase by 2.2% or $4.2 million. Sales tax collections are projected to increase by 0.5% or $0.6 million. Interest on investments will remain unchanged, and administrative fees for charters will increase $0.6 million. State MFP will increase by $3 million and remain with no growth factor until it is approved by both BESI and the state legislature. Federal funds will increase by $8 million due to indirect costs from additional federal funding. JRTC will increase slightly for program growth. This chart represents where the majority of the district's funding is from both property taxes and state MFP support. ESER funding is providing a unique opportunity for our district. It will allow the strategic plan to dictate the movement of the budget and the general fund for all students and all staff. It will allow the opportunity to increase the district's fund balance to ensure that we can build a reserve for later years. The next slides will provide you information regarding our projected expenditures for next fiscal year. Total expenditures are projected to increase by $15.1 million. A reduction of $1.8 million in prior year encumbrances is included. Regular education will decrease by $12.4 million inclusive of streamlining staff by using student enrollment projections, and strategically using ESER funds to reallocate items from the general fund. Special education will increase by $2.3 million for additional staff members for our students. The Magnet Program will increase by $1.1 million for continued growth in student enrollment in the program throughout the district. Other instructional programs will decrease by $0.3 million with the funding of alternative school teachers through Proposition 2 and ESER 3 funds. Instructional staff services will decrease by $0.4 million by streamlining resources and transferring positions to ESER 3. Special Programs budget will decrease by $0.2 million by maintaining the 2020-2021 funding source for ESL Instructional Specialist. Operations and maintenance of physical plant services and security will increase by $1.4 million. The utilities through the district will increase due to national average increases and the return of in-person instruction. Transportation services will increase by $2.6 million. This increase is due to increased staff and fuel that go along with the return of in-person instruction. The district will continue to use dearer grant funds to purchase additional buses for our fleet. Public information and human resources will both increase one position to assist in working with our community stakeholders and staffing in the schools. Other use of funds will increase by $19.1 million with the increase in type 1 charters, type 2 charters, and the continued decreased enrollment of type 5 charters. So the general fund expenditures, the vast majority are spent on instruction and other uses of funds, which is where the charter school charges are. The next two slides are a summary of the special revenue book that is available on Board Docs, and each board member has a copy in their chairs. This chart is also available on page 198 and 199 in your general fund budget book. The district has several opportunities that it can take advantage of. The rolling forward of the millage will be a $9 million boost to the district. The review of land sales and school consolidation in the district. This would allow the district to streamline programs in the schools with the strategic plan. Reviewing each department's budget to determine if there are any duplicate staff or obsolete services that exist. Professional development contracts will be eliminated as the district begins to have teams form to provide the professional development to the district. Program evaluation will allow the district to reevaluate all programming at the school level. Comprehensive staffing program will work each with staff to ensure that all of our schools are properly staffed based on the needs of their individual populations. Our next step following this workshop is the approval of the budget at the June Board Meeting. Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Bethley.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Goday, Board Member Goday.
Thank you. I recognize this is a little bit nitpicky, but I would just like to get a little bit of clarity. And I understand that today is Ms. Melissa Garrett's last day, or tomorrow is her last day. So she is not going to be here, and I realize that she is the guru of the numbers. But I'm a little bit concerned about some of the numbers that are in here for the staffing and the pupils at each school. And just a couple of examples. Wildwood Elementary, which is in Ms. Bernard's district, it shows a budget projection on the MFP of 439. And the current enrollment right, MFP enrollment right there today is 495. And I just don't see how that will ever, this is the MFP, doesn't count pre-K and K. It's 511 with those, but with just MFP money, it's 495, I believe it is, as of May 3rd. And there are a couple, Shenandoah is another one that shows a pretty good decrease. And so I'm just concerned that we have these numbers moving around, and there's no transparency or methodology shown to us as to how these numbers go. And the reason it's important is because it determines teacher staffing levels at all of these schools. And so, you know, I don't know what can be done between now and the regular meeting. But if there's anything that could be done to give us some clarity in that, as to, I know we got charter schools coming up, but Wildwood, for instance, there's no charter school I'm aware of coming up in that area. And, you know, we had to move trailers over there to be able to shoehorn pre-K in. So I just don't understand, and I hate to see teachers being transferred to other schools at the beginning of the year. Then we have a mad scramble to get teachers back in to cover those classes. And I realize you're just a messenger with the numbers. I totally understand that.
Ms. Donaldson will be happy. I've spoke to her. After I spoke to you, she'll be happy to come up and speak to you about how HR is staffing, because they do have a specific method to deal with these types of situations.
Thank you. Ms. Donaldson, I'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, Board Members and Mr. Goday. So just to answer your question, we actually use a formula to do just the core teachers. But what we did for this year, because we know that there is, there's going to be some flux, right?
Right.
And we know that there's, there's some anticipated instability. We tried to keep staffing as stable as possible based upon the number of students that they actually had this year. We use the projections, but we also use a formula. And what I can do is share with you the formula that we use, because the initial formula is just for the core content teachers based upon grade level projections. And then we also have separate formulas for PE and the other areas like the arts and things like that. So I can actually, we can share that with you so you can see kind of how we do that. We also work with the school throughout the summer to help them fully staff. And then we do anticipate there's going to be some movement. There, it always is because you have some last minute enrollments that are going to occur. And so we, our intent is always to kind of over-prepare and then move if necessary. Because sometimes you have parents who may move to another apartment complex because this new apartment complex has a great deal, you know, free first month's rent type thing. And so they may move there just before school starts, and, and so we try to anticipate that. But we do work strategically throughout the summer with the principals to, to realize that there is going to be some movement. And we do fully staff, but we actually didn't do any major cuts if it wasn't more than like 200 kids that they were down, right? So if, you know, based upon what they were currently enrolled with and what their projections are. Because we realized where there, we have some schools that have some growth. And so we want to make sure that we provide them with teachers and the appropriate number of employees based upon the number of students that they are going to have. But, but we do use the projections, but we also actually look at how many students are currently enrolled at the school to make sure we make a determination. But it will be movement. I mean, not movement in a negative way. But, you know, you have to, we have to be able to be fluid to react to the needs of each and every school. And so we are continuously always sourcing for qualified teachers and working with the principals. As they say, hey, you know, I had 17 more students enroll in my class, in my school today. We work with them to, to, to look at those numbers and to see where those classes will balance off with the staffing.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that it's a moving target. And I fully understand that budget's no more than a plan. So I really get that. I would like to suggest for next year's budget that, you know, here where we show the staffing and enrollment for last year's, for, for this year's budget, and then proposed for next year's budget. I wish we would add another column in, in the budget presentation by school. That is the February 1st count.
Yes, sir.
Of students.
We can do that.
And also the, the employment as of February 1st. Because we're comparing a make-believe number to another make-believe number without an actual in there to, to be able to guide us. And I think that would give us greater insight, because, you know, that's a more than a 10% reduction in students. And it just doesn't make any sense without, and maybe there's a perfectly good reason for it if it was written down. So I think we ought to have, you know, if it's more than a 5% change or something, there ought to be some rationale written as to why those numbers were selected. Because as we get into looking at school facilities and all these sorts of things, these numbers are become more and more critical. So I thank you very much for, for answering that, and thank you for looking out for our students. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Board Member Bernard.
Ms. Donaldson. Just to speak to the situation at that particular school, there is some form of choice in operation between those schools that are in proximity to it, which would be, I know you was in Highland Elementary. Yeah, so that school is always right at 100%. It, people move there if they can from.
They have great teachers and great staff and.
I think it's the faculty over there that they just really feel like a family over there, and they really love it over there. So the other comment that I wanted to make was that at a magnet school, we always know what our enrollment is going to be because there's a waiting list for almost every single one. So we don't need to apply that worst-case scenario. We may not fill this school next year. It's probably going to also be at 100% or above. It's going to be the same enrollment that it was the previous year, almost always with a magnet school. So that staffing formula that we're applying, where we say, you know, you're going to lose two classes, that sort of general formula doesn't work with every school. Particularly, I know with Wildwood, I think, I know you always has a pretty consistent enrollment. There's not a lot of fluctuation unless a new school opens up in the area sometimes. And I don't think that's going to affect that particular school. It could affect maybe Highland, Mr. Goday, or.
They're projected a small change.
Yeah, I think Highland will probably be the same enrollment that it had last year too. So I agree with Mr. Goday. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Board Member Dyson.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So yeah, it shows like about a 65 pupil decrease expected or projected for Shenandoah next year. And that just doesn't have much validity there. We are, the subdivisions are just building, 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 and they're in the, in the attendance lines. And so there's a, there's a lot less mobility at this school than at some schools. So I would appreciate if you would take another look at that. I don't want to expect this many less students. I think this year was anomaly because of the COVID and those parents who chose to do at home and, and homeschool and those kinds of things. But I don't think it's going to be a trend for Shenandoah. And so it looks like the other area schools are closer, much closer. So I just don't anticipate that all's going to stay the same high numbers at the middle school and the other elementary school and the high school, and yet not at Shenandoah. That just, it's not, it doesn't make sense. So if you could, please look into this further and get back with me. I would appreciate it, because I've been on that end of schools started, we have to wait for the 10-day count. Then you have to take off the displaced list, and then you can't find any teachers, and for so many years. And so I don't want that to happen this time. So please get back with me and let me know what we've done to, to remedy that.
With the student projection?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll work with the system.
Kindergarten class, I don't anticipate that. It's, it's saying we're going to need only three instead of four classes. That just isn't very likely.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Board Member Goday.
Yeah, just a quick note. That's one of the reasons why I'd like to see actual numbers in here. Because Shenandoah, as Ms. Dyson was saying, if you look on, it shows in the budget 594 dropping to 529, but the actual is 545. So 545 to 529 isn't that big of a change in the numbers. But again, not having anything actual to compare it to makes it very difficult to know, to have any place to stick your, stick your stake in the ground.
So I think what we could do, we could provide, so when we get the projection, we actually get it by grade level projection. And so what you all are receiving is the overall for the school. But maybe we just need to, to share with you the actual projection that we receive based on grade levels. Because sometimes you have a grade level that's rolling up that increases to the first grade or second grade. And so you end up shifting the number of classes that you need from kindergarten to first grade because you have more first graders this coming up year and, and things like that. So we, we, I don't know if you, I don't think you all received the actual grade level projection numbers, just the total. So I think that would help.
We get the actual, but not, not the projection. We get the.
By grade level.
Yes.
Yeah, so we will provide you that.
And don't put it in the budget book. I don't want to kill too many more trees.
Yes, sir. We'll get an email to you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll save some trees.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your help.
No problem.
Board Member Bernard.
Not to belabor the point, Ms. Dyson is correct that what happens is we project you under-enrolled by two classes. And so you have two transfers or two retirements or something like that. And you've had student teachers on your campus all year long, and they want a job. And you want to hire them because you trained them. But they have to have a contract, and they can't wait for the 10-day count. So 10 days into the school year, they're, they're in Ascension or Livingston or West Baton Rouge or Iberville or something else. And it's not fair to our principals. It's not fair to the faculty of the schools. It's not fair to the students or the parents. So I would like this remedied. I agree with Mr. Goday and Ms. Dyson about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we, Superintendent, and I do have to get caught up on my emails. Did we receive the, several board members had mentioned wanting to see projected budget for the next three years. Did we get that?
Yes, Vice President Collins. We sent it out on April. Yesterday.
Okay, thank you. I had to check my emails from yesterday. Okay, all right. And then, so my assumption is that it also shows how we're going to handle all these shifts from the regular budget revenues or regular budget expenditures to ESER back to. Okay, and I'll ask, I'll ask further questions offline once I review that. Seeing all the board comment, are there any public comment?
No public comments in the workshop.
It's up to the chair.
Up to the chair, okay.
I don't, I mean, we, we not beating a dead horse in the head. It's not like we're going to go till midnight if anybody in the public want to give a little input before we get to the official deciding meeting. It would be helpful for us to hear, hear it out, and we can work on it and resolve concerns. And then Superintendent, did you want to speak to, there was some concern about change in stipend, math and science stipend?
Yes, yes, Vice President Collins. There was a question around the science and math, which was a question around staffing decision that was made in 2017. If I get Ms. Donaldson, can you please come up to provide that explanation?
Good afternoon again. So with the math and science stipend, we, the district actually started that stipend in 2017 for math and science teachers who had degrees specifically in the natural sciences or pure math, master's degrees. And so it was intended to try to recruit more teachers into that area. And so our first year when we did it, we had about 22 teachers that received the stipend of $3,500. And then it, it kind of decreased. So it didn't actually do what we thought it was going to do. And so what we were looking at is not eliminating the stipend as a whole, but start looking at how can we push it out a little bit further and give this opportunity to more teachers if possible. And so we looked at, for this upcoming year, giving $1,000 to all of our special education teachers to make it more competitive for people to go into special ed. And then we're going to circle back around and look at how we can be more strategic with the math stipend so that we can use it more targeted to make sure that we are reaching more teachers and reaching more of the teachers across the district. Because this particular stipend is actually only, only teachers that receive it are actually middle and high school teachers. So it's not something that our elementary are able to receive. So we want to kind of look at it a little differently. And so the, the decision was, was made as we collaborated about it to potentially reduce it some, actually offer something to our special ed and gifted teachers so that they can receive some extra stipend money and to try to recruit some more teachers into those areas. and to try to recruit some more teachers into those areas. Because to add on those certifications actually costs additional money for those teachers. So, we were looking at that. We're also looking at doing a partnership with Southern University. We have a Math for Professionals program. And we're looking to potentially do a partnership with them to help with hopefully some grant money, cover some of our existing teachers to go through their program to get the doctorate in math and science education and cover some of that cost of that. And then eventually, they will come out on the other end. So, we're trying to figure out some new and strategic ways to use it. But it wasn't making the mass impact that we thought it was going to make initially when it was approved and proposed.
Do any of our, do any of our math and science teachers not have undergraduate degrees in math or science?
Yes. So, you do have many of them because you, essentially, you can have a degree, undergrad degree in another area. So, I could have graduated in biology or social studies. But if I'm able to pass the secondary mathematics exam, which I probably couldn't, but if I was able to pass the mathematics secondary exam, I would be able to add on secondary mathematics. So, it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the certification. It has to do with the master's degree, and it's not an education master's degree. It's a master's in just the pure sciences.
So, would it possibly be helpful to me if I was a principal? And I've never been a principal, so I'm just pure speculation what I think I would do, okay? If I was a principal and I could choose between someone with an undergrad in math or science versus a PE teacher or somebody who got an English liberal arts degree like myself, then I would want that, that would be my preference. The bar being a master's degree in math or science and perhaps raising it higher to a doctoral degree in math and science to teach middle and high school, perhaps is the flaw, I'm not trying to be ugly when I say this, but perhaps that is a flaw in the incentive to attract. Because if somebody is going to get a master's in math and science, it's usually not to teach in middle or high school. And if they get a doctorate, usually, again, it's not going to be to teach in math, middle or high school. It's going to be to teach on a college level, usually. And that's not to say that someone who has a PhD in math or science teaching on a lower level, just not good. But that's just usually the trend. And so, I just want to throw that out there, perhaps revisiting what we hang the stipend on.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what we want to do. We want to actually look at it differently and see how we can broaden the scale of it and make sure we reach more teachers with it and that we can recruit some more of those teachers. Because a teacher coming out of a college of ed program in secondary mathematics, of course, they've taken the same math courses as a person that goes through the traditional math track. But they're not necessarily eligible for this. It is really purely people who have like pure math degrees. And even though we have like the program, like you were talking about, someone who has those thirty hours of mathematics, we actually have a Math for Professionals program where we train teachers, train people who have pure math backgrounds. And they actually come through the district, and most of them are actually not eligible for it. We have maybe two people that are actually eligible for this stipend that have been in the program.
What holds them back from being eligible?
Because they don't, they have an undergrad in math or engineering or science, but they don't have a master's in the pure science. So, what we want to do is look back at it and figure out how we can fix that credential piece because it wasn't reaching what we thought it was going to reach. And we want to be more strategic with it. So, we kind of scaled it back. We're looking at the special ed because we know that this is a high impactful area for us. And we want to definitely attract as many special ed teachers, our teachers, core teachers. We want to add on special education as a content area as we can. But then, we also want to go back and revisit, and we do intend to revisit it when we start looking at our comprehensive salary study and we start looking at how can we change our salary schedule to be more competitive in this new market and really, really attract educators and reward them for the work that they're doing and also thinking of equity to make sure that we are encouraging educators to be, to reach certain goals and to reward those educators who are reaching goals. And so, we want to be more strategic. So, it takes a little time to build something like that. We have so many employees. But we are definitely looking at that, and there are some steps we have to take before we can do it.
Okay, and just... Because I really do disagree with cutting their stipend over fifty percent, the math and science. And then, the additional concern is how are we going to avoid the same shortfall with the speed? If the increase in money for math and science wasn't sufficient, how is it going to be sufficient for speed? But I see that board member Bernard has, is up next. Yeah, the, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. So, it's, how many teachers are we talking about? You said from twenty-two to...
I think this year was like seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yes, ma'am. So, we didn't actually, it wasn't recruiting any additional teachers into that pool.
So, it's down five from two thousand seventeen to this current year. And my question is, how do we know that the thirty-five hundred dollar stipend was or is ineffective at recruiting and retaining teachers?
So, we're actually able to see the teachers who receive it. And so, yes, we retained some of them, but some of them we did not retain even though we were giving them the thirty-five hundred. Because oftentimes, when they have that pure math, master's degree, they're actually looking to get a doctorate and go out and actually work at a university level and things like that. So, we lost a few at the high school level to the universities because they were, they kind of, that adjunct or that professorship came open or they finished their doctorate and now they've moved to...
Did you, did you actually survey them and ask them if the thirty-five hundred dollars was...
We did not, but we can do a survey, yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering how important it was to them because I have heard from them that it was important to them. And the other thing, because I'm not sure that just the decrease in the number definitely demonstrates that it is ineffective. I would want to have a more valid research to make that assertion.
We can do that.
And then, I know of biology and chemistry classes at the high school level that have had long-term subs in them for the entire school year that we just could not find anyone regardless of whether they were a master in their content area or not or regardless of whether they had the education degree in that content area or not. And so, we had students who had to take EOCs with long-term subs who didn't have degrees at all or didn't have degrees in the sciences. And that's troubling to me because I think all of our students deserve the very best educators, the most effective, most knowledgeable educators that are available to them. And I would, so if we're talking about seventeen people, you know, I had calculated it based on, so it's two thousand dollars times seventeen, you know, that's thirty-four thousand dollars. I don't see how it's worth taking over half of their stipend away. And I do know people who came here from Iberville, which is the highest in this parish region, for salaries. I do know people who came to this district because they saw that they could make not quite as much, but with some of these add-ons, this was one in particular, the thirty-five hundred, that made it possible for them to come to this district. And they were master's content areas. I'm not going to name them, but...
We can definitely revisit and look at adding it back if it's your request. That's not a problem.
Thank you. I would like to see it restored. I just, this is one that I just disagree with, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board member Lanis?
How are you, Ms. Donaldson?
Yes, sir. How are you today, sir?
I just had a few questions. I won't beat the horse. But my first question is, how much is it per certification for math and science for any teachers of middle or high school that want to get into the math and science program?
To get our, in our Math for Professionals program?
Yes, ma'am.
It's free.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, we don't charge employees to do this program. It's an ancillary certificate that the state offers, and so, it actually doesn't cost them anything. We do the training ourselves. We manage it ourselves. We use existing employees to support them. So, it actually is, it is not a cost to the person who is going into the program because it's not a traditional alt cert. What we do encourage them to do is to actually get into an alt cert because it's an ancillary certification. If they're intending to maybe one day want to become a principal or assistant principal, you can't add on the ed leader to that ancillary. So, we encourage them to go ahead and still take the praxis exam, still do those things. We were one of the first districts in the state to actually even create a program around this certificate. And we're really proud of it because we've got probably about thirty-two to thirty-five teachers that we put in math classes at the middle and high school level just through this program. And that's more than what you get from any of the universities right now. And so, these are second career individuals that have engineering, math degrees. We have a former actual university professor that has a PhD in mathematics that is doing this work. But actually, it doesn't cost them anything. Now, to get into a regular, traditional, alternative certification program, it ranges. So, it depends upon what the program is, if it's, and I don't want to quote the different programs incorrectly, but it can range between five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars depending upon what program that person selects to utilize as their alt cert opportunity. Because you can do alt cert to get a master's degree, or you can do alt cert just to get the certification piece. And if they're working in the district as a full-time teacher, we actually offer praxis reimbursement. And we also offer praxis prep that is free to all employees who are interested in adding on certifications or if they're interested in becoming certified. So, we've actually hired several teachers within the district in this manner. With our Math for Professionals program, we're really excited about it just because we have some people who can't, have struggled with passing the praxis exam, but they were paras in the district for many years and they were teaching, they were working as a para, and they had degrees in math, but they couldn't pass the praxis. And so, what we did is we were able to bring them in, work with them with the program, get them the ancillary so they can actually teach in the district. And many of them have passed the praxis and actually have added and become fully certified in the district at the state level. And now, they're looking at how they can further their careers doing different things. So, we love this program because it's, again, it doesn't cost a person anything to do it with us.
So, I guess my next question would be circling around, how are we advertising the program? Because I hear, I'm hearing that there's interest in it, but it sounds like the interest is starting to kind of dwindle away. So, how are we advertising it? I guess, I would, I guess that would lead to, is there anything on the website, the district website, where teachers can click? Is it on the first page? Because typically, people don't like to have to, you know, click through this page and click to that page.
We have a big website. So, I know that we are working with our communications department, and they're actually working on revamping our website so it's more user-friendly. But information about Math for Professionals is on our website. But also, employees or anyone who's interested can actually reach out to us directly. And we can walk them through what the requirements are that the state has set up. And we, again, work with them throughout the summer because we do like a little summer institute with them. Again, it costs them nothing to help them with the pedagogy piece because you can know content, but actually knowing how to take the content knowledge that you have and breaking it down for a student to understand is a totally different thing, right? And so, we work with them on that, and we work with them on other sense of perspective because everyone doesn't love math, and some students have fears when it comes to math. So, how do you take a person who is naturally gifted in mathematics and help them figure out, how do I take this gift in this subject that I love and put it into a student that may not like it as much as I do? And so, that's what we really work with them on. They got the content. It's just the, how do they translate that knowledge into pedagogy, pedagogy, I can't ever say it right, but practices that would, appropriate instructional practices that will impact student learning.
Yes, ma'am. And I heard a lot about the thirty-five hundred dollar stipend. Have we considered possibly adding this into the salary package for incoming teachers as a recruitment tool?
We would, we would love to do that. You give me the money. I like to spend. So, if, we do, we do share it with incoming people if they're eligible for it. We tell them about that thirty-five hundred dollars. But we can look at doing, you know, some incentives in that mechanism, definitely.
Okay. And I guess my last question would be is, because I heard you bring up Southern University, but in terms of options, because I know a lot of teachers like different options of knowing what types of schools and what schools they can go to. Have we spoken with the Capital Area Alliance to see, is it possible for us to have this network throughout all of our schools in the Capital Region?
Yes. So, we partner with all of the universities and all of the alt cert programs in the community to help because everyone learns differently. So, you have some people that like still that face-to-face instruction and some who prefer to do their alt cert totally digital and virtual because they have maybe multiple jobs or things like that. And so, we try to be, you know, we give them information about all the different options that they have. And we do work with and partner with many of the external groups that have, in the area to share the information that we have and bring people within the district. It is a shortage. We do realize there is a huge shortage for teachers. And I always like to tell people, I remember when I graduated versus, you know, what the graduation numbers for college of ed teachers are now. And what we want to do is really focus a lot of our energy on helping people understand how great this profession is, right? Because it is, it's a wonderful profession, and there's so much joy in it. And so, we, trying to build that branding of the profession, again, will help us to get more students, college students and high school students interested in it. And we also have the program that we're starting that we got the grant from the Louisiana Department of Education on with Bel Air High School this coming up year. So, we'll be pushing some students in Educator Rising, the Connect to Teach You all approved that last month. And so, we're excited about that work to build our pipeline. So, it really is about, as a district, especially a large organization, that we have to build a pipeline for ourselves of teachers. And so, we have to build that pipeline by using current existing staff that have degrees. And we do look at what degrees our current existing employees have and also providing praxis prep because that is normally what hinders people from becoming a certified teacher is really the praxis exam. And because you have to be, everyone's not a great standardized test taker. And so, it's not that they're not knowledgeable or they're not smart or anything like that. It's just that you have to know how to, I always say, beat the test. And so, we work with them on helping them kind of work through their testing anxiety and the content and things like that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm social studies, so I talk a lot. I apologize.
Board member Ware Jackson?
I was next. It's me.
Board member Goday?
Keeper in line. You didn't realize this could be the Ms. Donaldson show tonight, did you?
I'm here. I'm here for the students. Yes, sir.
I fully, fully support relooking at our salary schedules and relooking at all of these issues. But for the seventeen teachers that are there, I strongly recommend you reconsider that decision because in the big scheme of things, it's thirty-five thousand dollars. But in, for the teachers themselves, thirty-five hundred dollars is a big thing.
Yes, sir.
And so, I really strongly suggest we relook at that. And, you know, at least until we come up with the full comprehensive plan of what we're going to move to and how we're going to do that. Because if for nothing else, it'll destroy confidence in any incentives and things that we have because someone comes and takes a job, then two years from now, we change it on them. And they no longer get the incentive. So, I would, I would hope that we relook at that because the savings isn't worth the bad PR, the bad faith and having disgruntled teachers who know how to do things like do chemistry. and having disgruntled teachers who know how to do things like do chemistry and all these sorts of things. So please, please relook at that.
Yes, sir. I'll work with Ms. Lopez and we'll, we work together really well, so we'll figure it out.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Board member, Ware Jackson.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Goday, for saying that because, so I don't have to. Because that was one of the things that, that I was concerned about, whether we might lose some good people over losing that stipend. Couple of other things. I was looking for Greenville Superintendent's Academy and couldn't find it. And I was kind of concerned about their staffing because, you know, historically, they come up short just about every year, you know, especially within the STEM arena, so.
EBR readiness.
Middle. EBR readiness.
It's the middle.
It's the middle.
It's in the alternative schools? Yes, ma'am. But there's an elementary, a middle, and a high now. So that, it's the middle.
It's the, so Greenville Superintendent's Academy is the middle.
EBR readiness, middle.
So maybe that's why I can't find it. You see, I'm looking at one page that says Greenville Superintendent Academy, and then I'm looking for it in here and I, and I don't see it.
Yeah, it's the middle school. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So, but you took, you know, to be perfectly clear, I'm talking about the one on Foster. Yeah. So that's a big concern is, you know, whether they have what they need because historically, they don't. So would you please take a look at that and, you know,
Yes, ma'am.
let, let me know what, what you find. And also, two other concerns was you looking at the enrollment projections for Brookstown Middle and Capital Middle? And looking at that, I'm wondering if, are you including Brookstown now into the Capital Middle population in this, in this budget?
Let me look at the book to see. I don't know if we.
Because the numbers don't quite.
Merge it together. I don't know if it's.
Right.
Will we look at it? They, they were merged after the book was done. So let's make sure that everything is together. But yes, when they were populated, I'm working with HR to move the population.
Over.
Over.
Okay. Yeah, because it looks like they're going to be full to the brim over there at Capital.
I'll recheck it. Yes.
And we've been working with the principal of Capital Middle with, with her staffing and everything to make sure that she's ready and prepared to receive those students from Brookstown Middle for the upcoming school year.
Last time I heard, it was, it was still coming up short, and I'm a little nervous about that. So, so I'd appreciate it. You take a good look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Let me know what you find for Greenville and Capital.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I just want for the administrative positions, and you can redact. I, I just need the, you can come up with a number or something versus people name. I know it's public record and people's names have been attached to salaries before, but I just feel better with it redacted. But for like the administrat- the administrative positions.
Across the district?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. We can provide that to you.
What I would like is a breakdown of the funding sources.
We can put that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And board member Dyson.
I just wanted to echo that it does seem like we might get the whole plan before we make changes and eliminate those math and science stipends and, and get a comprehensive plan. And ironically, and sadly, I, I just saw on social media yesterday that we have three vacancies at one of the high schools and that we already know about. And I'm hoping, I was hoping that those stipends could help us attract some that typically go to neighboring parishes and not hand tie this school to having to hire off of a displaced list or anything like that. But allow them to try to find the best of the best, especially three. It's just a lot. And we, we're kind of going reverting back to a few years ago where we went about three or four years in a row with this trend at this very same high school with science and math. And it's so near to other lines, other district lines, that I just don't want to lose out on, on those top-notch teachers that we should be able to attract with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Board member Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Vice President Collins. Um, yeah, I just wanted to lift up, I think someone mentioned it earlier, about the dire necessity of providing us an opportunity to look at the data. So for example, if teachers are staying or leaving because of the stipend, like having post and pre-interviews matter so that you can hear from the folks to talk about like the evaluation, to talk about retention. I think it's something that district-wide we do a really bad job of, figuring out people's experience with us, whether they leave, stay, or go or come back. So I think it would be a good practice to implement in the future to figure out why people are leaving. So if it's not the stipend, then it is something that we can bring to the board to rethink about like the need of it. But just taking it away with no data to support why we're taking it away becomes problematic. So it's just something that I would just suggest in the future of thinking about doing.
Yes, sir.
Seeing all the board comment, any public comment? Seeing no public comment? Back to the board. And we now move on to the next agenda item. Discussion, C, discussion, C two, presentation of the proposed 2021-22 proposed special revenue fund. Is Mr. Crochet or Mr. Chester, or is that Ms. Lopez?
There is a conclusion to the special revenue fund.
Oh. Okay. They had it on there.
The summary that I showed on the, on the screen is also available on page 198 and 199 in your general fund budget. But you also have the complete book with details on every one of the budgets.
Okay. All right. Well, then moving forward, that shall be the conclusion of the board workshop. So the board workshop is now adjourned. Moving forward with the committee of the whole.
Yes?
Board members, make sure you log into the committee of the whole so you can vote.
Oh, yes. Board members, board docs, switch to your other meeting. Okay. Committee of the whole Thursday, June 3, 2021. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of fifty percent capacity of the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the meeting room. The committee of the whole scheduled for June 3, 2021, immediately following the public hearing board workshop, will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on board docs located on the school board's website at ebrschools.org/about. A period for written comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in board docs. Individuals online wishing to make a public comment online about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in board docs and submit it via the highlighted public hyperlink on the agenda item details. Online comments are available for a public review. And we now, I now call this meeting to order. Board secretary, please call the roll.
District nine, President Tatman. District four, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue. District two, Mr. Lannis. District three, Mr. Howard.
Present.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Present.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
We have a call. Moving forward to item C one, update from the superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. I'm happy to announce that we're going to be returning to our regular boardroom on 1050 South Foster Street beginning August 5, in our August 5 meeting. So I just wanted to inform the board and the public. Couple of great things going on right now in our, in our system, summer camps. I'm happy to announce that we are, we have free summer enrichment skill camps are completely filled. This year, for the first time ever, we were able to serve six hundred and twenty-five students at twelve different school sites across the district, free of charge. The camps will teach students athletic skills, academic enrichment, and give them a safe place to play and learn all summer long. A special thank you to Ms. Lynn Williamson, our athletic director, for all the dedication, hard work it took to create, staff, and enroll our students. And she's doing an amazing job. I know she's sitting somewhere back there with the green mask. Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Strategic plan. Community stakeholders, cabinet, and board members met on Friday, May 21st, at LSU to review and provide feedback on our initial draft of a strategic plan. Additionally, we will begin collecting public feedback over the next three weeks as we will be working to complete the strategic plan with approval on our deadline by the end of this month. And we will bring that to the board next month for the board to have a discussion in public about it. Last, regions. As we continue to better understand the ways in which we can better serve our families, our chief of schools, Dr. Sharon Williams, is leading an effort to internally realign our system of supports. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Sharon Williams to share with you a brief overview of how we are approaching that work to better support our schools, student, and families as we engage on improving our support to our community and neighborhood schools.
Good evening, Vice President Collins, board members, Dr. Narcisse. My colleagues are coming to join me at the podium as we present this evening. Cue PowerPoint. All right. So tonight, we're going to discuss briefly with you our regional support and regional alignment. We call this positioning our district to reach new heights. We are working on internal alignment to ensure that our schools have the most radical support that they can receive from our central office. So why are we moving to a regional approach rather than a tier approach? We believe that each school community has assets, and we're going to take a strengths-based approach to support schools. Secondly, we believe that in order to maximize each school community's assets and to address their unique needs, we need to provide, improve our level of support and collaboration across divisions and departments and our service delivery to schools where they are. We're going to meet the needs of schools where they are in their communities. The primary purpose of this realignment is internal. This is, is an internal realignment of district support and resources. So we want to connect our why to the research. There are several studies and documents that we use to make our decisions regarding this regional approach. The first is that we emphasize that leadership matters. Principals are the second only to teachers' classroom instruction as it relates to school-related factors that have an, an effect on student achievement. We also believe that schools and districts that have durable and supportive district structures are ones that do well for all students in the district. We also believe that if we are integrated and we have a cohesive and coherent approach to supporting schools, our schools will get better. So the way we're making connections between what our research base says and how we're going to align our practices in schools, we're going to emphasize and prioritize principal leadership. We're going to increase our collaboration and accountability through the regional approach. And we're going to support schools based on the individual school and regional needs. So here are the regions that we have divided our school district into. There are five regions. The Scotlandville Northeast region, which consists of seventeen schools. The Broadmoor Sherwood region, consisting of sixteen schools. The Mid-City region, seventeen schools. Highland Old South Baton Rouge region with eleven schools. And the Southeast region with ten schools. So now our col- our co- my colleagues are going to share how they're going to realign and deploy support to these regions in their respective areas. In terms of school leadership and support, we will be realigning our executive directors for school leadership in a regional approach. They will be assigned to a region that includes pre-K, early childhood, all the way to our high schools and beyond. Good evening. From a technology perspective, our zones are already broken into five regions. And what we will do is realign our support to fit the new model so that our network specialists who are assigned to specific schools will now just be focused on each of the five areas that are listed in the regional support.
Move the mic. Good evening, everyone. We met yesterday as an accountability team to talk about this transition and brainstorm about how we can effectively and efficiently realign the support that we provide to schools. And what we're going to do moving forward is each of the lead specialists that work in the accountability office will be assigned a zone. They'll provide technical assistance and assessment and instructional support to that zone. And they'll be the direct line of contact or the immediate on-call person for the schools in that area so that they can interact with them on a more frequent basis.
Good evening, Vice President Collins, board members, and Dr. Narcisse. From a operations perspective, one of the things that I think is, is critical for us to be able to do is on the facility side, we have got to be more responsive. We have also got to have more of a systemic approach to how it is. We respond to requests, follow up on those requests, and ensure that those needs are being addressed in a timely fashion so that they do not grow. And that's, that's part of what the organization alignment from an operations standpoint I'm looking at. Also with respect to transportation and looking at how we have them more engaged in all of our areas, parental engagement. We have been operating in, in, from my observation and perspective, in a silo fashion. And we're trying to make sure that we are working, truly working as a team to drive forward with making those improvements in our academic environment and making sure that on our operations side, they understand the impact and having metrics in place to gauge and determine how we are doing and how we're performing.
Good evening. We will support the five regions by aligning our five-member literacy team across the five regions. And so a district coach will serve as the point person for each of the regions. Our district coaches are specialized in areas such as. Our district coaches are specialized in areas such as K, the elementary, K to five, six to eight for middle, and nine to 10 for high school. And though they are specialized, we realize that there are specific needs for our schools. And so we will align ourselves to work across the district so that we can provide the support that's needed for our students, our teachers, and our school-based coaches.
Good evening. So the way that the communications department and Public Community Relations Department are looking at aligning, in communication with our, and in discussions with our community partners and out-of-school providers, they have expressed that they much prefer a regional, community-based approach as it helps them to align their supports and resources to target specific communities where many of them are currently working and then allow the district to work with those specific out-of-school providers to support those resources. So we feel it's going to help us streamline and become more efficient in how we're connecting with community partners and those out-of-school providers who provide enrichment and other support opportunities for our students and families. And then in our approach to our liaisons and parent aides, it allows us to be much more thoughtful in their specific professional development throughout the year so that they are meeting the needs of the specific region where they are, where they are placed. And our communications can become much more targeted to the regions based upon the available resources, supports, and offerings throughout that region. Thank you.
Good evening. In student supports, we're going to realign so that our services are provided in each region. And additionally, we're going to have both vertical and horizontal alignment so that if there's an area of specialization that needs a more deep dive, we will have staff that can provide that deep dive. So it'll be both vertical and horizontal realignment. Thank you.
Good evening. President Tapman in his absence. Vice President Collins, and to Dr. Narcisse, and to the board. So the division of academics, which encompasses ESS and EL, it also encompasses federal programs and magnet, as well as GT. We are working across the district as it is right now, right, supporting all schools. Specifically, what we're going to be doing is working with Numeracy. In collaboration with Literacy, we're going to be working with Numeracy. And with Numeracy, excuse me, we're going to have 20 math coaches. And we're going to separate those based on the five regions to provide extreme support for our CDNF schools. But we're also going to be doing other things to support our AMB schools as well so that there is systemic support across the district to move our math scores. So we'll be working in collaboration with other departments, leadership, as well as Literacy, to ensure that there is a cohesive movement to move all schools here in EBR.
Finally, I forgot to mention the folks that helped us map out our school district into regions. Ms. Smith and Ms. Stubbs, along with Mr. Cousin, helped quite a bit with mapping out the region, as I am unfamiliar yet with all of our areas within our city. So I appreciate their help in helping to map this out for us. So finally, we want to become a coherent school district. We want to strike a balance between individualism for each school and the needs of a region. And we believe that by working in a regional approach and working in coherent, in a coherent fashion with all of our district departments, that we will see levels of achievement that we haven't seen before in our school district as we're working together to improve student achievement at each of our schools and at each of our regions. Thank you.
Our goal will be to, this new regional approach will begin in this new school year. And so there'll be transition that will be happening when we begin talking with school leaders in their professional development week, as well as teacher development week, to be in a target specifically how our supports will help respond quickly to the new alignment that each chief shared. And Madam Vice President, that is my report.
Okay, thank you, superintendent. We now move forward with item, items for consideration. Item D one, property and casualty insurance program policies. Recommended action is the consideration of a request to authorize the administration to approve the most cost-effective property and casualty insurance program policy renewal package for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System for the 2021-22 fiscal year and to provide for related matters. Can I get a motion? Board member Dyson, can I get a second? Board member Goday, any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Seeing no board comment. Madam, I was about to say Madam Vice President. Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
The motion carries.
The motion carries. Moving forward to item D two, resolution to reject uninsured motorist coverage. The recommended action is a consideration of a request for the approval of the resolution authorizing the board president and the superintendent to execute and sign all documents to reject uninsured motorist coverage in connection with the East Baton Rouge Parish School System's automobile liability coverage and its self-insured retention program for the 2021-22 fiscal year. Seeing no board comment? Any public comment? Oh, just trying to run through it. Dyson, board member Dyson, and can I get a second? Board member Goday. Okay, and now. Seeing no board comment, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no board comment. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote.
The motion carries.
Moving now to item three, healthcare and ancillary benefits plan. The recommended action is consideration of a request for the approval, authorization of the following. A, proposed 2022 healthcare rates for active employees, non-Medicare and Medicare-eligible retirees participating in the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana administered medical plans for Core Buy-Up and Community Blue. B, proposed contract renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana for claims administrative services for the 22-24 years. Item C, proposed contract renewal with UNAM for dental for '22. Item D, proposed contract renewal with Solerics to continue the HRIS system administration of all benefits for active, non-Medicare and Medicare-eligible retirees for 2022. Item E, proposed contract renewal with Optum EAP for employee assistance program for all active employees and household members for '22 through '24. Item F, proposed contract with Accredo for administering specialty pharmaceuticals for the '21-22 year. Item G, proposed contract renewal with Express Scripts Pharmacy for the 2022 year. Item H, authorized superintendent to negotiate and execute the 2022 contract for stop-loss insurance coverage. And item I, proposed contract renewal for various voluntary benefits, including discount program, group, auto, and/or home, critical illness, accident, hospital indemnity, legal services, identity theft, and employee purchase program for 2022. And can I get a motion? First by board member Goday, and seconded by board member Howard. Board member Dyson?
I just wanted to request a brief overview of these items. Please.
Good evening, Vice President Collins, members of the board, Superintendent Narcisse. We have Aaron Burkhart here from Mercer. He's an actuary, and he's got a PowerPoint to display all these items.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. And I guess we'll cue the presentation. Awesome. All right, so I appreciate the time this evening to talk about the benefit plans. At the first kind of few pages, we have just an overview of an executive summary, and then we'll get into a little more detail. But please feel free to stop me and ask questions as you, as you go. So for the medical plans, there is no change recommended for the 2022 plan year. For the Blue Cross Blue Shield administration services, there was a fee increase of 3%. So as a reminder, as a self-funded medical plan, when employees go to see a doctor, right, it's the district that pays the claim. Blue Cross Blue Shield Louisiana just administers that. They process the claim, right? So there's a fee that they've charged for processing that, and that was up for renewal this year. And it's 3%, increase, but then it's flat for the, till, through 2024. For the dental and vision, no, no increases. Those were either under guarantee or just no increase. The Humana Plan is under a guarantee, so no increase for there, for the Medicare piece. Moving along, the FSA Cobra, no increase there for the rates. The Express Scripts will, will get into, there's a savings associated with it, better contracts, but no cost to the district through that. The specialty drugs with the Credo is just a new contract due to a Louisiana state law that's going to require a direct contract with the Credo instead of having to go through Express Scripts. The EAP is up for renewal, and they're offering a three-year fee with no increase for 2022, and then like a $3,000 increase for 2023 and 2024. And then no change to the Solerics and voluntary benefits. So we'll get into the, to the medical premiums. I'm going to skip over kind of the premiums and get to kind of the budget piece because the premiums are recommended not to change for next year. So these are the same as current for the actives, the non-Medicare retirees, and the Medicare retirees. So the, the increase that is expected for 2022, when you think about kind of medical trend on claims, looking forward, is a 6.6% increase, which equates to $4.3 million. The recommendation is to cover that $4.3 million increase through the health fund. Because there's a fund out there that can be used to cover the cost so that there will be no increase in contributions to employees or to, to the district's contribution in the rates. At that 6.6% increase, there would have been, if that had been passed along, a $1.3 million increase in employee contributions and a $3 million increase to the district if that 6%, 6% increase had been shared. But at the recommended flat, it'll just be that that 4.3 will be absorbed through the, through the health fund. So the recommendation is no plan changes at all, no increase to contributions and cover that. Any questions on the medical? Yep?
Board member Goday?
Yes, sir. Just a quick question. I know that last year, we approved a RFP to go out and look at our advisors on this area. And we, I think, awarded that contract to Gallagher, which does not start until January 1st of this year, I believe, if I have my memory correct. So what role, is this all from the prior benefit? I guess it was Marsh, was it Marsh? No, it was a...
Mercer.
Mercer. I couldn't, I knew it started with an M, but I couldn't think of it from Mercer. So what role did Mercer play in this versus which role did Gallagher play in this, if any?
Mercer is still on a contract, so they, they handled 100% of the activity for this year. And so the effective date for Gallagher will be 1/1 of '22. But they're going to do some preliminary work to get up to speed and get the, so they can hit the ground running, hit the ground running. 1/1 '22. So there's things going on in background.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
There aren't any other questions on medical? I'll, I'll move on to some of the, the other items. So the next one is the, the fee agreement for the processing of claims with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana. So the fee increase is $1 per an employee. That equates to about $70,000 per year. But that fee is guaranteed over a three-year period. And that's built in to that, to the funding rate. So the fact that there's no increase, that kind of excess of $70,000 will be covered as part of that increase in the health fund. For the dental renewal, no change there on the dental plan. Solerics, no change as well. So flat fee. EAP was up for renewal, and they offered a three-year, three-year renewal with a flat fee for 2022, and then a $3,000 increase and $4,000 increase in the come, in 2023, 2024. So finally, on, on the prescription drugs with the Credo, with the new Louisiana health law, there needed to be a direct contract for specialty medications. There's no cost to the district for this. It's just kind of another, maybe just another contract with another health vendor to, to give specialty benefits. With Express Scripts, one-year renewal and some better contracting terms lead to some savings for the district, but no additional cost. And then finally, stop loss is a coverage that you get to protect from high-cost claimants. So anyone who has like a really catastrophic condition, and it helps protect the district from that. That requires typically data much later in the year through September before they'll finalize that. So the recommendation is just to negotiate that when, when we have enough data. And then voluntary benefits is the final item and no increase to the renewals for, for voluntary, so. Any questions?
Board member Bernard? Is there a change in the formulary for the pharmacy benefits, or is it the same?
So the formulary itself, like the, the type of formulary will stay the same. They, they review it right regularly and make changes as new drugs come out. But the formulary itself is going to stay the same.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you so much. Bye.
Yep.
Seeing no other board requests to speak or comment? Any public comment?
Four and a half years ago, I was given four weeks to live. I have died four times. I am still standing before you. At this point, my cardiologist just asks me, have you talked to God? Because clearly y'all have something worked out. Things are beginning to get worse. My veins blow when I do my weekly infusions. I don't know how much time I have left. I have prioritized things and taken many things out of my life. The school system is not one of them. I will spend my last days fighting for this system. However, one of the medications I so desperately need, the school system does not cover. So that's something, I've spent 15 years fighting for this system. And one medication that can keep my heart beating, this system does not pay for.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, back to the board. Seeing no other board comment, Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
The motion carries.
Moving forward with item four, a cooperative agreement with Capital Area Human Services District. Moving forward with Item 4, a cooperative agreement with Capital Area Human Services District. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of a cooperative agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Capital Area Human Services District, Baton Rouge Mental Health Center, Children's Behavioral Health Services. Moved by Board Member Bernard, seconded by... Howard. Board Member Howard, excuse me. Seeing no comment from the board, any public comment?
Hi, everyone. I'm Giselle Jacobs, and I'm a student at Baton Rouge High. And I wanted to take some of your time to talk about mental health with students. I prepared a speech and I sent it to the superintendent and my district representative Jill Dyson. So I'll read a couple excerpts from it. I'm 14 years old and currently attending Baton Rouge Magnet High School. I'd like to have a conversation about the past and current plans for not just students at Baton Rouge High, but all students of East Baton Rouge. I've felt the need to address this situation because it is simply unacceptable. You guys are planning to keep the 2.5 GPA requirement to stay at a magnet school. From my understanding, this means that if a child at a magnet school in EBR is below a 2.5 by the end of the school year, they must go to their homeschool the following year. I think this would be fair if this just was a normal school year, but all, as we all know, it is not. I attended McKinley Middle Magnet School for 6th to 8th grade. I loved it. It was amazing and colorful and diverse. I got all As and Bs and all through it. I was very respected and loved by many of my peers and teachers. It was great because I felt so accomplished by the end of 8th grade. I ended with straight As. Coming to Baton Rouge High, I was still excited about starting high school, but little did I know I was in for some trouble. This is the first time in my whole academic career that I've gotten lower than a 3.0 GPA. Look at my transcript and you'll see. Ask my previous teacher, and they'll tell you how great of a student I was, academically and personality-wise. I've completely changed. I'm not the same Giselle I was before March of 2020, as well as many other students. I guarantee our grades will be excellent next year when things get back on track. The pandemic is changing us as well as our academic ability. The thing is, not only are students struggling, but teachers also. They're not used to teaching virtually or trying to keep up with kids who are at home. It's hard for them to effectively deliver information to us as if we were in person. You have to understand that it is not at all the same. Most of us have what is called situational depression. That's when the depression isn't permanent and will slowly go away as the situation ends. How can you expect most of your students to show all their potentials when they aren't even motivated for life right now? There has to be a change in how this is working. I'm not saying change how the school is working, but now it's because it's March, well, I wrote this in March, and our school has two months left. But change the fact that you were planning to kick students out with a GPA lower than 2.5. I recently received a letter saying I could not attend Baton Rouge High. I worked so hard to get into this school, and when I got that letter, I broke down because I worked so hard from 6th grade, I'm sorry. I worked so hard from 6th grade to get into Baton Rouge High. It's my dream school, and I worked too hard to get kicked out at my freshman year. I was extremely depressed, and I couldn't do my work. I usually have a 3.9 GPA, but this year it was way below the requirement. And I just ask of you to please consider letting me and other students lower than a 2.5 GPA stay at their magnet schools. It's not fair this year. If it was any other year, it would be fine, but we went through way too much, and some people lost family. And you can't expect them to do their normal abilities this year. It was just too much.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize because I usually do a better job at keeping comment germane to the agenda item. Initially was not sure. I thought you were mentioning your school history to point to, and you did mention briefly about the importance of mental health. I'm happy to have let you slid as one of our babies at our school. But as a social studies lesson on high school board meetings and public meetings are run, you always have to speak, your point has to be directed at the agenda item. But that being said, I know all of the board members are glad to hear your concerns and will definitely take those into consideration. And I definitely do appreciate your comments as stress levels are high oftentimes on school campuses for academics at magnet schools as well as at other schools. And so it's definitely something that we should address, and I thank you again for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Board Member Ware Jackson?
I just want to say, out of the mouth of babes, I think we really need to consider those things. And I know I've said this a lot of times before, but I think we often expect kids to do things that we can't do ourselves. And I know that many, many, many adults in this city have been through so much and, you know, have not been able to perform in their jobs even, you know, as effectively as they have before. So I would ask that we consider things like that. I know there's lots of times, you know, we just do things the way that we normally do them, but, you know, this has not been a normal time, and I know we've made a lot of considerations in other areas, and that may be one that's really difficult to consider. But I think we should consider those comments very seriously. Thank you.
Board Member, oh, Superintendent Narcisse?
Thank you, Vice President Collins. I was texting staff to follow up. We will have a conversation with the director to take a look at that particular issue and all the issues in that space. We were very sensitive around last year, and so I can't make a full statement on what the shift will be, but I just want to make sure that we will look at how many students fall in that category, and then we will proceed from there and communicate with families accordingly as well as the school leaders. And so I already was telling the Chief Academic Officer and Chief of Schools to follow up with that parent, and we'll take a look at all the number of students who fall in that category.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board Member Dyson?
I just wanted to thank the young lady. And I know we're continuing to talk on an item that's not on our agenda, and I understand that we need to do this quickly because it's not on our agenda. But I would like to thank you for the strength and courage that it took to come and share that. I did read and respond to your email, and I hope that you received that. And I applaud you for having the courage to come before us tonight. I know these were, this just was a difficult year. I do think that summer school has already begun, but I'm thinking that it's just begun. So maybe there's a way to help with some remediation possibly so that they may could score on certain tests or something to, just this one time, try to opt back in and then watch those grades for the first semester of next year. So that's just my thoughts, and I wanted to thank the young lady. So thank you.
Thank you, and Board Member Goday? Oh, I'm sorry. Board Member Howard? You wait, okay. Board Member Goday?
Yes, I've been informed that there may be some board members that need to recuse themselves from this vote. So I would like to make a substitute motion that we refer this to the regular board meeting without recommendation so that we do not run into a problem where it fails because we don't have enough people to vote. We're good now? Okay. But I still think, let's just, to be safe, let's just, I'd like to make a substitute motion to refer this without recommendation.
Okay, so you still want to, okay.
Just to make sure that we don't accidentally do something that we don't want to do.
Okay.
May I have a second? And I think I did get us back on the agenda item.
Madam Secretary?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the student also for bringing this to our attention. We know that it was a very difficult year for all of our students and everybody in the community. I would like to ask Dr. Narcisse if we would just please make sure that the student has the supports that they need, and you did say that already. But also, it's very important that every student is coming out of high school with the Carnegie units that they need in order to graduate. So maybe if we can meet with the family, with the guidance counselor, to review those things. Ms. Dupre, I know you're thinking the same thing that I am, that we need to make sure that she is able to earn her Carnegie units needed so that she can succeed in beyond high school, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and so any board comment regarding the substitute motion? Any public comment regarding the substitute motion? Seeing none, no additional, Board Member Lannis?
Can I get clarity on that substitute motion again? I'm sorry.
We're on Item 4, and we're just procedurally, we're just recommending it without, sending it without recommendation because we have several board members who have to recuse themselves. So it's just totally procedural.
Okay. Seeing no other board comment? Madam Secretary?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward with Item 5, extern agreement. Board of Supervisors of LSU. The recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of an extern agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Board of Supervisors of LSU and Agricultural Mechanical College in the amount of $22,742.20 for the provision of psychological services, professional development, and educational quality improvement services, and the collection of data for research and program evaluation. Can I get a motion? Board Member Goday, seconded by Board Member Bernard. Seeing no request to speak from the board, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Seeing none with the board. Madam Secretary?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with Item 6, a grant. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the Cox Charities Innovation and Education Grant in the amount of $11,031 for a total of seven teachers to provide for innovative classroom ideas for the 2021 through 22 school year. Can I get a motion? Board Member Lannis and Board Member Ware Jackson? Seeing no board comment or request to speak, any public comment? Back to the board, seeing no request to speak. Madam Secretary?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward to Item 7, Agreement for Center for Educational Leadership. The recommended action is a consideration of a request for the approval of the agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Center for Educational Leadership in the amount of $89,650 to provide leadership, coaching, and professional development. Can I get a motion? Board Member Goday and Board Member Howard? Seeing no request to speak? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Seeing no board comment. Madam Secretary?
Please vote. Ms. Lannis? The motion carries.
Moving forward, Item 8, Professional Services Contracts. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of professional services contracts between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. National Institute for Excellence in Teaching in the amount of $397,450 to provide support and professional development on school improvement best practices. Item 8B, Dreambox Learning in the amount of $580,848 to provide mathematics student licenses, professional development, and support. Item 8C, One Goal in the amount of $78,900 to provide teacher training, curriculum, personalized platform, and analytics. And Item 8D, Baton Rouge Early Childhood Education Collaborative in the amount of $266,000 to provide evidence-based school readiness services to address the needs of East Baton Rouge Parish Housing Authority, families with preschoolers who are not enrolled in a learning center, daycare, or Head Start. Can I get a motion? Board Member Lannis, seconded by Board Member Ware Jackson. Board Member Lannis and Howard, did y'all want a presentation before your acts? Just a question. Okay. Board Member Lannis?
Yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to know, where were we in the process for program evaluation metrics on all of our professional service contracts? I know we've been talking about that quite a bit, but we still have no way of evaluating whether or not the programs that we are approving through these professional service contracts are working or not. So I just want to know where we on that process, and can we get any possible updates on that?
Yes, Board Member Lannis. We're actually working and putting them in contracts. I'm going to let Mr. Gwen Shamlin talk about that as we've been putting that in our metric.
Yeah, Ms. Lannis, I actually reached out to a couple of different sources to see if there's a way to build into the template that we currently use, an outcomes measurement. The problem with these kinds of, with contracts in general, is every contract has a different outcome. And so it's hard to come up with a rubric for one type of agreement. And so it may require some professional development.
And so, uh, it may require some professional development for district leadership staff, because as we kind of come up with contracts, we have a template we use for most of our contracts, but occasionally when we negotiate something outside of the district, we may end up using a different form or a different format. You still have to have something that works across the board, and that's been a challenge. Looked into it about two weeks ago, continuing the research. It may require some training for the staff, um, it's not as simple as simply a rubric, because one size doesn't fit all. But we can come back with a report, um, by July one and let you know something specific. And we can provide updates to the board before then via email.
And, uh, based on the board's recommendation, uh, from the last meeting, we will have in every contract moving forward, a metrics for them.
Board Member Howard?
Thank you, Vice President Collins, and thank you, Ms. Lanis, because you stole my question. Um, but I just want to, uh, reiterate some of the things that Ms. Lanis said. Like, I know that oftentimes when you roll out new systems of evaluation, that there's a challenge in, like, developing people. But we are also rolling out additional funding every single time we approve another professional service contract. So, just to make sure that regardless of what it takes to implement those things, that we are, um, making this a priority, because we've been asking for this for like, three years, um, and haven't received anything. So, like, I just want to uplift again that it is a priority for me as a board member, and I think my colleagues share that same priority, because we have been asking for this for quite some time.
And so, uh, Board Counsel, what's a reasonable, um, expectation in terms of, can we have a target month that we might be able to, um, get something and then do a workshop around what that is, or, or something? What, what would, based on your initial feedback that you're getting, and what you're finding out in your research of addressing the matter?
Yeah, we, I talked to Dr. Narcisse about this matter, um, actually after the last meeting. My, we could come up with something in July for you guys. The problem is, we probably need to look at something more than just a workshop. It needs to be professional development because of the nature.
Yeah, you did say that.
Yeah, and, and this would involve rubrics, but it's not, again, it's not a one-size-fits-all. That was a challenge. Um, I reached out to some external counsel and some other school districts as well, because this is a movement, kind of a, kind of a, a national movement, um, in this direction. There's a variety of different ways to do it. There is actually no, no real guidance on it. It's something we have to kind of create potentially. So, it may require bringing in someone to actually help us develop that beyond just a simple, uh, looking at the outcome in a contract. Uh, and additionally, uh, there may be some additional requirements around federal funding that we may need to look at as well, and, you know, in addition to what we do with our general budget fund. So, I can provide some feedback as early as July. I don't want to make a promise I can't follow through with, um, because this may require a little more than just a report and just a, a workshop. I think it's going to require some training.
Okay.
And we can bring to the board what that specific looks like as soon as July. It may not happen until...
And so, then maybe by July, we can have, uh, a reasonable firm recommendation on a date?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Board Member Bernard?
I agree with my colleagues. I think evaluation is very, very important when we're issuing a contract. And I know this came up at the previous meeting as well. I had an entire course in graduate school on program evaluation in public administration. Ms. Collins and I probably both had similar courses, the textbooks, multiple textbooks for that one course are this thick. And there are many, many ways to evaluate qualitatively and quantitatively, and according to best practices, and I think best practices. But I'm happy also, I think probably Ms. Collins is too, I don't know if she has time with her course schedule right now, but I'm, I'm happy to provide as well. But, but the Public Administration Department, this is what they do at, at LSU and Southern University. So, they may be able to provide you with some guidance. And I, I think maybe the academic literature would have something also that would inform. But it's, it, like you said, I agree with you, Mr. Shamlin, it is going to be different for every single contract. So, absolutely, but, but, but best practices informs this evaluation in every case, in my opinion.
We can certainly begin by talking to local universities, that's probably a pretty good resource. They may provide us with a, I'm sure they can provide us with some assistance, and if not assistance, maybe guidance.
Thank you.
Board Member Lanis?
Yes, I'll be quick, I just, this is something I just really wanted to add, it's something I should have said earlier, is maybe we could, uh, I don't know how we, uh, put out a bid for any professional service contracts. I would imagine that we're using some type of RFP or RFQ situation. Maybe it's something, we can tie some type of baseline requirement somewhere in there, but it's just a suggestion. I know it's going to take some time to come up with that, but again, just a suggestion.
Board Member Howard?
My last time as well. Um, and for me, like, it doesn't even have to be like this extensive, like, evaluation, but like, just to start, if we could from year to year get a report out about, like, what we saw great gains and growth based off of what we bought the service for. So, if we're buying a learning system to teach writing, like, what are the gains that we've seen in our datum and assessments based on formative assessments, summative assessments, and writing? So, it doesn't have to be this, this robust system of evaluation, but we should be getting some kind of reports about what's happening with the money that we're spending to provide professional services.
Thank you. Okay, we are... I, I went to the public already?
No, ma'am.
Any public comment? Seeing none? And seeing no additional board comment? Madam Secretary?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward to item nine, advertising an official journal for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval to select the advocate as the official journal. Newspaper advertising of the East Baton Rouge Parish School System for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Board Member Lanis? And Board Member Ware Jackson? Seeing no request to speak from the board, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no board comment, Madam Secretary?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item ten, job positions, job description. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the following job positions and descriptions. A five-oh-four facilitator, B, virtual classroom teacher, C, district five-oh-four coordinator, D, director of multi-tiered systems of support, E, lead social worker, F, literacy innovation coordinator, G, school social worker, H, social emotional, social emotional learning specialist. Can I get a motion? Board Member Lanis and Board Member Goday? Seeing no request to speak from the board, any public comment?
I know that all these job positions are going to pass, they're all going to be voted for, as every single job position that Superintendent Narcisse has requested has passed. Y'all could have just passed all twenty-four that first week, and we would have been done with it, because that's what y'all are doing anyway. Um, I do request that y'all do something to make sure the people that fill the positions are qualified. I'd like to bring up Dr. Lashley's job requirement of being a leadership certified. In Louisiana, it's a requirement of the job position. The entire time that she was Director of Reading, she should have been securing this certification. She has not yet secured that. She is not qualified for the position. I believe Frank Chester is not qualified for his position because there's a CPA requirement in his job position. Y'all need to look at the requirements in the job positions and make sure the people you hire are actually qualified to hold the position. Just like with teachers, you make sure that we are certified and highly qualified in the area in which we teach. I cannot go teach elementary school, I am not certified there. I cannot go teach math, I will ruin children. I will ruin the next generation if I go teach math. You don't want that. But I'm a beast at ELA. Put people where they are qualified. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment? Back to the board, seeing no board comment? Madam Secretary? Board Member Dyson?
Um, just real quick, I just wanted to ask, um, when we are going to get something that is going to show us, like, what positions are going to be, um, eliminated so that we can add the positions that you feel, um, are going to help us get there? And, you know, I'm wholeheartedly behind you positioning how you feel is our best way to move forward. I just want to see where we're going to eliminate as far as our, um, total jobs. And I think we've, uh, been amiss through the years of when we're not, um, filling a position or using a position, or don't feel its value to our system anymore. We haven't really gone through and removed them. And I think, kind of like our policies, we just, I think we need to make sure that we intend for our policies to be adhered to, and that we're, the design of our needs as far as job descriptions are there. And I'm fully supportive of you having full autonomy in how to position us. But I just would like to see the, the dollars and how we're going to eliminate some too. Thank you.
Seeing no other board comment? Madam Secretary?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item eleven, advertising for bids for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one through twenty-two. Recommended action, consideration of a request to authorize staff to advertise, receive, and award bids for materials, equipment, supplies, and services through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, to the lowest responsible bidder, proposer, meeting specifications, and all state and federal requirements for quotes and formal invitations to bid. Can I get a motion? That is Board Member Dyson and Board Member Howard? Board Member Goday?
Yes, uh, in these, um, procurements of what we're doing, could I get someone to give me a brief overview of how we try to integrate the fair share, uh, into these requests? And also, uh, how we try to look at local suppliers, uh, in this as opposed to maybe just national suppliers, uh, as we, as we work through these? Because this is one area where we do have the ability to impact local economy and things like that. And, and look, I'm all for, for saving the money, but, you know, if all things being equal, I'd rather go with a local supplier. So, um, I, I just do not know how the fair share program works into this, uh, and stuff. So, could you just please give us a brief two-minute overview of how that works?
Mr. Goday, board members?
Thank you.
Dr. Narcisse? Larry Williams, Director of Purchasing for the District. Yes, I work with John Smith and the, who's head of the fair share program. We meet every week. We look at what we can do to spend money locally with local vendors to the degree that we can. He is, every day, constantly reaching out to local vendors. I have participated in the meetings where we provide the detailed information that local suppliers need to know how to do business with us. So, we're doing that, we're very active with that. I'm sure he can provide some detailed reporting on what we've accomplished up to that point. I don't think he would be disappointed to see that.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure it was up there in everyone's foresight as, as we work through these.
Just on a personal level, I realize that every day, these local vendors in our community are supporting our schools, providing funding, supplies. So, I have it on my mind every day, how can we spend some money with a local vendor? And we have as many times as we can, not as often as, as I would like to see us be able to do it because of the large volume and systems that has to surround what we do. But we are very conscious of that and working toward that daily, I can assure you. And I think, I think the information that Mr. Smith could provide through the fair share program will show that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work.
Certainly, you had one other question, I've forgotten that, that there was one other item you asked about.
Then you win, because I forgot too.
Okay, we'll call it good then, thank you all.
I'd, I'd also like to say that, uh, Mr. John Smith is scheduled to give a presentation in July on the fair share program overview, so that is coming.
Seeing no other, uh, requests to speak from the board, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Seeing no further comment from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward, item twelve. Request for proposal, third-party administrator claims. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the authorization for staff to issue an RFP to seek proposals for a third-party claims administrator for the East Baton Rouge Parish system schools. Liabilities and workers' compensation claims. Can I get a, by Bernard? And a second by Ware Jackson? Seeing no request to speak by the board? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no request to speak from the board? Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item fourteen. An agreement, substitute privatization. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of an agreement between East Baton Rouge Parish Schools, School Board, and ESS Sou... Did I skip?
Item thirteen.
Put a little check mark on everything, okay. Child nutrition summer stipend. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of a five-hundred-dollar stipend for child nutrition summer program staff for compensation for thirty-eight days. The funding source is child nutrition, not, the child nutrition program. Can I get a motion? Board Member Bernard? And Board Member Goday? Seeing no request to speak from the board, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no comment from the board? Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
Oh. Okay.
Ms. Dyson, can you vote? The motion carries.
Moving forward with item 14. Substitute privatization. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of an agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and ESS South Central LLC to privatize substitutes for the East Baton Rouge Parish school system. Can I get a motion? Board Members Goday and Lanis. Board Member Dyson.
I was just going to ask for a presentation, and then I'll, I'll have my comments after.
Do I use this? I mean, I can use this, okay. All right. Good evening. In the absence of President Tatman, Vice President Collins, board members, Dr. Narcisse, and the community. The Office of Human Resources is looking to do something very different. And I will tell you as a former teacher, if you'd have asked me this 15 years ago, 17 years ago, oh, 18 years ago, don't know how long I've been here, 22 years. 18 years ago, when I was in the classroom, I would say, no way, no way. If you'd asked me 15 years ago, I'd still say, no way. If you asked me five years ago, I would probably say, no way. But as my scope and knowledge of the workforce and the changes that our workforce is experiencing, especially within this pandemic, and the challenges that we've experienced as a school system, I see a broader view. And I think with experience and with knowledge and scope, you do become more broad in your perspective of how things operate and where you need to move to get ahead of things. And so, we are looking to privatize our substitutes. And the reason why we're doing this is really to try to get ahead of some of the employment challenges that we've had historically, but also we project in the future. So, why are we considering moving to privatization? Well, one of the things that we have to remember is that when the pandemic occurred, we actually had to stop paying our substitutes because we weren't certain after March 13th when we were coming back, what was that going to look like? And so, we lost a large portion of our substitute pool. You can see that we, we actually lost a large portion, but then we built it back up this year. So, right now, we're at 647 subs. You can see the total number of absences that we've had this year. We've had 52,585 absences, and it's created some challenges. We, we didn't have the greatest fill rate prior to this, but the pandemic created a whole new challenge for us as an organization. And so, we had to start really looking seriously at how can we address this need for substitutes and get a partner with us that will work with us specifically and meet our needs and also make sure we keep our students safe and provide some benefits for the district as well as for our substitutes. So, when we think about the cost of substitutes and how we spend our funds, you can see that, and again, we've had some weird years in the past, so we, we went back and looked at 2016 and 2017, and you can see kind of the amount of money that we spend, which we kind of consider are indirect costs. Now, these are things that technically we're not going to save money on, but we're going to save sweat equity on. And that means that this is going to mean that our employees, full-time, are going to be able to move some of their, their work into some other areas that we may need focus on to service, to service what we normally do with having to serve our substitutes. You know, primarily, we want to create some space for our executive secretaries because it is a lot of work to try to find subs and, and connect and use the system. And we have a great system. We've, we've moved to frontline, but we, we need, we need to be more efficient in these areas. Now, generally, we spend about $2.5 million in substitute pay. What we're looking at in this year, we actually didn't spend that much. We spent about $1.5 million, but that was just because we started our school year off in hybrid and also in hybrid and, and virtual. And so, we, we had some flux there. And so, kind of looking at the total substitute cost for us with our indirect labor costs and also our total actual cost, we're looking at about $3.6 million. Now, what we did experience this year is a huge increase of the number of employees on sick leave. Of course, we're going to experience that, right? It was a pandemic. So, we knew that we were going to experience, this is probably the first time ever this year because we did everything digital. We're really excited in HR that our sick leave process is digital, our long-form process is digital. So, now we can really quantify the work that we do and quantify how we serve our employees. And so, as of May 19th, we processed 2,426 sick leaves. And that means those are employees who missed more than six days of work. Some of those are repeaters, so you would have a person that may had to recertify their sick leave because they had to extend it for whatever reason. And this includes all of our sick leave that we process. That's, this includes maternity, EFMLA, COVID, and just regular FMLA leaves. And so, 939 of those leaves were, were teachers. And these are extended, again, extended sick leaves that we experienced. And so, we knew that we needed to, this was probably one of the best times for us to actually make this change. And so, we went and started looking at other districts to see what other districts were doing around the state as well as around the country. We talked to them about their challenges. We talked to them about what they liked about it, what they didn't like about it, what they learned from the experience of having privatization. And so, we went to a selection process. We worked with Mr. Larry Williams, and he kind of guided us with this process. And we actually reviewed three different companies. We put together a committee of stakeholders from human resources, executive school secretaries, child nutrition, administrative assistants, and recruitment services. And we, we actually reviewed the training, recruitment incentives, and implementation of the programs. And once we finished, and we had a scoring rubric, and we reviewed everything, so we, once we finished, we selected ESS. And we felt like ESS was going to provide us the type of support and the type of collaboration that we felt we needed. One of the best things about this particular selection was that they were going to, they are going to actually have three employees that are going to be housed in HR, that their entire focus is going to be our substitute pool. So, we're not sharing with any other district or parish with these services. We also felt really good about their community involvement in the other districts that they are working in. So, we did do some cross-referencing to see where they involved in the community, how did they help those districts become better served? And so, we were looking for something that was going to be flexible, adaptable, was going to focus on the needs of EBR because we're, we're not like everyone else, and we feel like we needed to have a company that was going to do what we needed them to do. We also wanted to, to, right now, we're not able to technically provide health benefits to our substitutes. And so, we wanted a company that would be able to provide that to subs. So, so ESS actually provides health benefits. They also have incentive programs, and they have extensive benefits to help those people who are our current subs stay with, with them and stay with servicing the district. And also, they're going to absorb some of the administrative tasks of substitute placement management, recruitment, and credentialing, training, job placement, and payroll, workers' compensation, also unemployment claims. One of the things we've been able to accomplish this year, and I think we haven't done it for many years, is that in the first quarter of 2021, we had zero cost for our unemployment claims. We were able to do that, and that was a really big deal for us. The other thing that we liked about ESS is that they were going to actually, they're offering a $1,000 scholarship for each of our high school students, each of our high schools, not each of our high school students, let me make sure, correct that. Each, each of our high schools, one scholarship, and the district can choose. And what we are planning on doing is selecting a student that intends to become a teacher. And so, we're going to give a scholarship at each one of our high schools to help one of our students, or one student in each high school pursue the field of education. And so, we're really excited about that because we get to select and choose and create that process with the principals and encourage people to come into our profession. What are some of the benefits for the district? Job postings, again, featured on national and local job boards. They do that work for us. On-site and virtual job fairs, they work with us and, and to do that. They have customized marketing materials already built, so there's a, it's a, not an additional cost for us to do that. Cutting-edge online recruitment. We can share services. We still, as a school system, by state law, have to submit teaching authorizations for all substitutes that work within the system, whether it's a third-party provider or not. And so, we're, we're excited about that particular piece. But the other piece is that they're going to allow us to recruit substitutes without penalty into the teaching profession. Some of the other vendors that we talked to were going to charge us if we actually recruited someone out of that pool to become a full-time teacher in our district. And so, we didn't want that. We wanted to make sure it was a partnership, and we were building a qualified pipeline. And the, the substitutes still would have the benefit to participate on our Unlock Your Potential program, which is a free program that we offer for substitutes and employees to take praxis prep. So, they still have those benefits when working with us. The other piece that we talked about, they have a local support team, which would be housed in the central office. So, we're never detached from the people who are going to be dealing with our students. They still come through the Office of Human Resources. We still work with them on this. They're also going to provide us with a regional support team and corporate support team. So, as we need certain things, they're going to be able to maneuver to get, get us what we need. What are the benefits for substitutes? One of the things we wanted to make sure is that we didn't do this haphazardly, and where our substitutes were going to lose something in this. We wanted to make sure that we thought about intentionally who was going to provide the best benefits for our subs. One of the great things that we'll be able to do with this is right now, our subs are paid on the teacher rotation, so they're paid on the first and the 15th, which is hard when, when people are trying to be competitive in this market. And so, they're actually going to be able to pay our substitutes weekly. And that's going to be a big deal for, for many substitutes because that's one of the reasons why some of them may not choose to sub is because they have to wait until the 15th, and they have to wait till the first before they get paid. Also, they have a 401K retirement plan. Unemployment eligibility, all of that becomes their liability. So, if there's unemployment claims, it doesn't come to the East Baton Rouge Parish school system. It becomes an issue for ESS. Performance incentives, they're going to be able to easily maneuver with performance incentives. They're going to be able to provide cash awards, rewards for substitutes that accept positions in hard-to-fill schools. So, they're going to be able to really have, have some flexibility in that. And that's going to help us with, with equity. When you think about, I'm sorry, take my mask off. When you think about equity, it's going to be important that, that they're able to offer that to some of our schools that have struggled to, to get substitutes. And then, they also have an Employee of the Year award that they give to the Employee of the Year for subs, and it's $500. And so, they're able to do that, and then $500 is actually donated to the, the school of that sub's choice. They have, again, health benefits, medical, dental, and vision insurance, life, critical, accidental, and disability insurance. These are things that we are not able to offer substitutes, and they will be able to offer it. And so, we wanted to make sure, again, that we were choosing a company that was going to provide a true benefit for our substitutes. We also looked at increasing the rate of pay for our subs to make sure that, again, we didn't want them to lose anything with this so that we could attract substitutes. So, we did look around at other school systems to see what they were paying subs. We also did some market surveying, and we felt like these were going to be some better options as far as pay. And so, this is the pay rate and the bill rate for what ESS is offering us. They also offer live and in-person training, position-specific training guides. So, they offer more guides and things like that are built for substitutes. If you've never subbed before, you know it is a challenge to substitute, go in the classroom and sub. You know, if you're not a teacher, you know, you gotta, you have to have some thick skin to substitute. And we do appreciate our subs, but we want to make sure that we work with them to provide training. And we do train our subs, but to have the assistance and, and to work together to do this, I feel like this is going to be a, a great partnership. They also offer some more online supplementary training and fully customized training curriculum. And so, again, we're looking at more intentional training for our substitutes, and also that's going to help those substitutes as they start deciding is teaching or the profession of education for me, maybe I want to become a teacher. So, they're going to have some extra work in that area. What are our next steps if the board decides to move in this direction? We've, we're going to meet with ESS, and we'll, we'll make some transitions. We talked to some other school districts that have chosen to do, take this route, and they said it's a very quick transition. It works really well. ESS will actually onboard our current substitutes. And so, our current subs will actually be able to just move over to ESS. We'll have a couple of sessions where they come in, they do their paperwork, and they're automatically, they automatically move over to the ESS system. And ESS will, again, onboard those substitutes, and they will coordinate with our frontline system. So, our schools and principals and executive secretaries actually don't have to learn a new system because they'll use our existing frontline system, and it'll be a partnership. So, there's nothing new for them to, to learn in the most part, and so it would be a very efficient process, and we have enough time between now and the upcoming school year to get everything up and running. So, when will we start? Hopefully, if this is approved, we'll be able to start July 1, and we'll start our recruitment campaigns for substitutes and substitute training and bring subs in. The other piece that we've not been able to do in the past is service child nutrition as well as paraprofessionals effectively and clerical. So, we're going to be able to do all of those areas within this substitute support. So, we'll have a very seamless way of doing sub-support in different areas, operational as well as instructional. And I don't know, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions?
Board Member Dyson?
I have a few.
Yes, ma'am.
So, when the Affordable Care Act came along, it really hurt our academics in that we could only have the substitutes for 28, 30 hours a week. And so, that same substitute cannot teach those children in that class for even an entire week. And so, there were lots of needed turnover of substitutes. And so, one of my first questions is, will that
It won't be a problem.
I mean, the same law would then affect ESS education, would have to also pay them benefits if they worked more than the 28.
They will be allowed to do that. So, that, that'll be the good piece.
And there's no way that they're going to be trying to shuffle.
No. They'll be able to do it.
And send new ones.
Yes, ma'am. For, for us, it was a challenge because you, you think in terms of we would have to add more people to our existing insurance policy.
Sure.
And so, with this, this becomes their piece, and because they're a large enough organization and company, they're built to be able to provide the insurance benefits more efficiently. And so, it would not be an additional cost on the district. One of the concerns was that the cost of medical, if those subs did do that, it would cause us some issues. And because they're temporary employees, they could have the benefit and then kind of leave. And so, that particular liability would no longer be an issue for the district, and we would have some consistency. And we're thinking in terms, and I know what you're saying, you're thinking in terms of a person, a sub who was in the place of someone that might have been on maternity leave for six weeks or eight weeks. They would have to stop and not, and they couldn't come Thursday, Friday.
They probably could get a long-term situation where we would have offered them. I'm talking about somebody that got the flu or.
Two to three weeks, yes, ma'am.
I mean, like even just a week, and they can't have for five days the same substitute.
Yes, ma'am. So, this would allow us to have more consistency with that.
And then, I'm wondering about the ESS. What is the full name?
Matt Shrunk is here from ESS, and.
I think it's a little bit confusing.
I know, because we use ESS as our Special Educate Exceptional Student Services. Yes, ma'am.
I think that it would be good if we would hear what their full name is and, and call them by. I think that it would be good if we would hear what their full name is and, and call them by that.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and all of our literature and all, because I think it's going to be confusing because they're going to be thinking that they're only going to be in ESS classrooms.
Hello, Board Members and Superintendent. All right, ESS stands for Education Solution Services.
Okay. So, I would just like us to market it that way. Education Solution Services.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And that's, that's all I needed on that one. And then, um, I, I know that, um, some principals and even some teachers have preferred subs that they like to use, that they want in their classrooms, that they know can pick up the ball. They know they won't be just there babysitting and that, and, and they know that there's a, a, a good partnership already built. So, if we're thinking that these will just transfer over, then, uh, I know that our system has a way to say, okay, these are the ones in my vicinity that I, and check off, these are the schools or this is the one school and one subject that I am willing to substitute in. Will they still have this opportunity?
It will still be the same system. So, they'll still use the frontline system. And so, none of that will change. They'll, they'll be able to go to frontline. They'll have their, their login and everything. And so, they can still have preferred substitutes.
Yeah.
Um, we're just trying to create a bigger pool and also have dedicated people that that is all they do. They, they are just focused on substitutes.
Very good. And then, um, the, uh, the other thing that I've posed for a few years, well, ever since the Affordable Care Act, actually, is this, um, idea that, um, principals need full autonomy to be able to fill their positions with who they feel is the best, best fit for their team and their school. And so, those that then end up on the displaced list, I have talked about with various administrators, administrations, that we could create a pool of substitutes. And with our new design of our, um, alignment, regional alignment, maybe assign certain ones for the different, uh, zones. And, um, and, and I understand we're doing some of it every year that I've talked about it. I hear, yeah, we're doing, but, um, but I still hear, oh, no, they're making me take off the displaced list. Um, and I lost somebody because they went to another parish because I couldn't get an okay in enough time. I had to wait and only do the displaced list until after this deadline or that. And so, I just want to make sure that we're not hurting ourselves in any way because we're already paying those teachers benefits and salary, even if they're not chosen because, um, they're in our system already. And so, I just want us to still be able, I want this contract to make sure that it specifies that we can still do some of that with our, you know, displaced teachers, their certified, those kinds of things.
Yes, ma'am. So, those people wouldn't go to
Through the other.
Through the other company because they're currently existing, uh, EBR employees. So, they would still be teachers and we would just use them in, uh, a movement, kind of a flex, uh, flexible movement, uh, piece. But it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be designated as subs because they're, they're, they're not technically subs. So, but they could do those things like you're talking about as far as, um, being backups for schools as necessary.
So, Mr. Shamlin, we, do you feel like we would need anything written that we're going to also have our own pool that we're going to be working from and then we go to?
Not, not with regard to this particular company, no. That's an internal matter. So, we wouldn't need anything beyond what we have.
Sounds good. Okay, and so, um, then the other question that I had is about the rating of these subs and who is the principal at the school site? The one that does the determination on if they would choose for that one to come back to their school? How they would rate them, what kind of feedback they give? Who's going to be responsible for the evaluations?
ESS would, would be responsible. We, we would collaborate with them just because if something happens at a school that impacts a student or the school in a way that is very concerning, we still have some autonomy with that. But ESS would evaluate and work with the principals on evaluating whether a substitute continues to work with them or not. So, there is, uh, there is a, a piece in that.
Okay, so we can make sure that principals have
They have the autonomy. They select, they can select their subs. Also, as they put those sub vacancies in, subs can select those vacancies digitally using their cellphone. Um, so you kind of get a notification and you can say, hey, I would like to, to take this, this job.
Okay. And then, the child nutrition substitute? Is that coming out of the child nutrition, um, budget?
Yes, ma'am. So, that piece would come out of child nutrition. It currently does at, at this time. And so, it would still continue. They would be billed for those subs. So, this would be a more efficient way for them to, uh, fill their child nutrition, um, absences and, and things like that. The only thing we're not able to cover is bus operators. Um, but, but this is, we're excited because we're going to be able to do some things with clerical as well. So, if you have a clerk that's out or a secretary that's out for, um, a couple of days or we'll be able to have, uh, clerical support, um, in the schools as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Board Member Lanis?
Yes, uh, before I make my comments, is the scholarship, the $1,000 scholarship, is that reoccurring every year?
Yes, sir. Every year, our student, every year, one student from each high school will receive $1,000. It's not reoccurring for that student each year they're in college. It is only for that one year.
Particular school, right?
Yeah, but at that particular school, we'll be able to award a $1,000 scholarship.
Okay, I have to be honest. I have to be absolutely honest with you right now.
Yes, sir.
I'm blown away. I remember maybe a, six months ago, we were talking about how we were going to pay subs more money. You said you were going to work on something. And to bring this right here back, I must say, I'm absolutely blown away from the weekly pay. They get a direct deposit every Friday. They get $75 referral per person that they refer. So, let's say one person refers 10 people, that's $750 that they could receive extra. Uh, the professional development program, the curriculum training, the principal communications plan, the monthly and quarterly, uh, progress reports that they're going to turn in. They absorb a lot of the administrative costs. And now, knowing that it's a reoccurring $1,000 scholarship that they're providing and they work with local churches and PTOs at those schools, that's next level. And I just want to say, I commend you for that. This is great, great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Board Member Howard?
Thank you, Vice President Collins. And, and I too wanted to, uh, make remarks regarding the, uh, program specifically around the students and the scholarship being used for students who are interested in education. Uh, I think that districts need to be more intentional about building pathways for students to enter into the profession. So, I'm, I'm 100% in agreement that we should tailor that and be intentional around that scholarship money to students in, uh, education. I guess my question is, how do we think about, um, creating additional pathways and pipelines for the subs who are actually interested in, uh, pursuing teaching as a profession? So, I know that they are going to provide them with professional learning services and all of these things with ESS. But how do we as a district tap in to make sure that we're actualizing and building and growing our own who are already in our schools to actually service us in a full-time capacity of being a teacher? So, any additional pathways and the additional opportunities that we as a district can take the charge on with this particular population of people is kind of my question.
So, so we offer the Unlock Your Potential program where we have substitutes, paraprofessionals, clerical staff, anyone who's interested in becoming a teacher. The, again, the biggest challenge for most people if they're degreed is the praxis exam. And so, what we do is we provide free praxis prep. This is actually, uh, we pay teachers within the school system to actually deliver this instruction. And it's live instruction. And when we, when COVID occurred, we went digital, um, and virtual. But, uh, we still, we still offered it this year. So, it's live instruction. It's every week and it's based upon the different tests that a person would have to take. So, we do offer that. And the substitutes that would work under E, uh, ESS would actually, um, be able to still access that program. And so, we've, we've actually hired several teachers, numerous teachers, teachers through that because we support them through taking the praxis exam and pushing them through that particular process.
So, uh, thank you. And so, in the spirit of evaluation and program evaluation, I would love to get some kind of regular report like on the numbers that we've seen, like what subs actually stayed with us long-term? Who decided that they wanted to actually pursue teaching of a profession? And who actually entered into their program to think about like what recruitment and retention looks like within the programs that we already have facilitated within the district? So, thank you.
Yes, sir. We can get that information for you.
Board Member Godey?
Yes, we continue with the Ms. Donaldson Show. No, I just wanted to echo, uh, Board Member Lanis and Howard and others. I'm so glad to see us finally making some movements on this program. This is something I surfaced back in 2018 and have been trying to get us to think about this because there is no substitute for a teacher in a classroom. But a good substitute's the next best thing. And sitting, seeing classrooms empty and having other teachers try to cover those classrooms at the same time that they're teaching their own, it just multiplies to hurt. And, you know, when you look at the cost, that yes, there is salary costs and things like that, but there is also an educational opportunity cost, uh, that opportunity that's lost. So, I, I fully applaud you for finally bringing this program forward. And I also want to congratulate Mr. Strunk, uh, if I pronounced that correctly. I met him way back in February of 2020 at the LSBA and, uh, tried to get him interested in this. I'm glad to see it's been a long haul, but it's finally, finally come about, uh, if we pass this motion. So, I just wanted to thank you. I think it's a good thing and we need to really focus on, uh, how we educate children and try to start minimizing all of the administrative things that we do because we're not here to be administrators. You guys are here to be educators. So, the more we can focus on education, the better we can do. So, thank you very much. I appreciate all your work.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. How much is the, uh, projected cost of the contract? I know that it's a 27% upcharge from the rate of each sub based on our previous trends. You know, for the past couple of years, maybe COVID is a bad example, but, uh, a bad year example. But, um, how much do we think it's going to cost?
So, we anticipate looking at, um, using the numbers that we used, um, in 2016, 17. That's kind of the, uh, a high year for us. We're looking at probably about $700,000. And, and, and when you think of, of, of that, you're, you're thinking in terms of, these are costs that we generally kind of spend on, so
And then
Not just the salary part. So, if you think of the 26% are, uh, that you're going to be covering, that you think of in terms of, um, the unemployment costs that we pay for things. There's lots of, of things that we pay that are direct paid things that come out of the district budget to cover substitutes. But then also, some of the liabilities with regards to unemployment, workers' compensation, that, uh, we don't always see in regular budgeting, but they are there. And so, it actually does balance off. And we do believe that we'll be able to work focusing on stabilizing staffing as well as, um, working on our retention because this will allow us to really be able to focus in on that and have ESS focus on just that sub piece. And so, we don't anticipate that to be, again, 2016, 17, if you remember, that's the year of the flood. So, that was a heightened year.
Can we get an average instead of just one year? Can we get 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19?
19, 20. We can, we can get that information for you. Yes, ma'am.
And that'll help compensate for
Yes, ma'am, definitely.
Because I mean, I don't want to overestimate either.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, um, and then, um, so are the subs going to get paid more money? Or they going to get the same, that same rate?
So, we actually, in the budget book for this year, we increased our sub pay. So, that, that is based upon the new increased sub pay for 2021, 2022 that we, we've budgeted for. Um, so, we wanted to, we needed to be more competitive. If, if, I mean, if you drive around town, you can see the rate of pay at McDonald's and at other competitors for, for talent and for employees, they're paying heavily, um, just because of the talent shortage, uh, nationwide. And so, uh, we knew that we needed to go up, um, and, and compensate them more. Also, this will be, um, an easier way for those substitutes who work those long-term sub, uh, positions to move up into those next levels without having kind of the, uh, things that we have to do internally to move them to the next level. So, they'll be able to easily navigate. And I think this'll, this'll be more efficient for them. And, um, you know, and then also, the paying of each week is going to be a major, uh, benefit for us because it's going to make people want to, uh, be willing to sub because they don't have to wait as long to be compensated.
I know one of the places ESS was at, uh, relatively recently was Nashville. How many new subs did they bring in to the Nashville? Because I know one piece of this that's attractive is that they're supposed to help us with a sub shortage. So, how many, how, how much did they help Nashville increase its sub pool?
So, I can, I don't know, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I can see if, um, Mr. Strunk can, Matt? Don't go anywhere.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Wendy Beam. I am the Senior Vice President of South Central and just happen to be over that Nashville project. So, that's why I thought I'd step up and share. Nashville brought us in to only help on their lowest-performing schools. It was about the lowest, I think, maybe 25 to 40%. And this was about two to three years ago. And they were performing at about a 40% fill rate. And we worked with them from mid-year, like October until May, and we brought them up to a 70%. But then, at that time, they ran out of monies and they were not able to continue our program that next year. So, that's kind of where, where that is. We, we still work with them related to custodial and other, but they were not able to, um, fund the rest of that, uh, program.
They ran out of money before or after y'all gave them a $250,000 additional bill?
No, they had a amount that they had designated for their purchase order and it ended up going over because we increased the fill rate, uh, so much. So, that, I believe that last, uh, that last meeting
So, they eventually figured out, it was eventually figured out why, where the 250 came from?
Uh, I'm not familiar with that, with, with the 250 you're speaking of. But I know they, uh, whatever the original purchase order was for, uh, they went over that because we reran out in like March because we had filled so many more positions.
Okay. In section 6.3 of the contract, um, it, it piqued my interest because of the situation in Nashville, which you, you explained. Changes in the pricing plan. The company may change the pricing plan contained on Exhibit A in the event of mandated labor costs, which makes sense if they go up to, you know, uh, $15 an hour across the board, minimum wage or something like that, including but not limited to employee healthcare or family leave benefits. Minimum wage, payroll, taxes, workers' compensation rates, which are required by law, regulation, or mandate or enacted, implemented, become effective or increased after the date of this agreement.
Madam Vice President, can you tell us what chapter of the contract you're looking at?
6.3. Yes, sir. I just have a little concern over like employee healthcare, for example, has a tendency to go up. We don't have that ability to negotiate what agreement y'all come up with. And so, then there's concern, for example, on something like that falling on us.
It, it never has. It, it never has. I mean, we have 700 districts. We, we negotiate those contracts on behalf of all of our subs. So, so that's, that's our cost. We would not, we would not.
So.
I guess if it was.
Is there any, I mean, what about that, that in the contract? Or, I mean, if y'all, if y'all don't have issues with going up on your employee healthcare, are you comfortable with making sure that we don't have to absorb that cost? Because right now, the language in the contract puts that cost on us.
Yeah, and it, it would not unless, you know, something unforeseen happened even to us where, you know, the government voted and said, everyone has to be covered and you have to pay everything. And, you know, at that point, yeah, we're gonna reevaluate, but we would discuss that with a, a district beforehand. Don't anticipate that happening. We, we have had to renegotiate and we've not passed those costs on, you know, to our districts or to our subs.
Okay. So, then for clarity, because the language of the contract includes increases in employee healthcare, can we, is, is the company amenable to amending and striking that out?
I would say yes, but we'll need to take that and have our own legal review it, but certainly, yep. That is, that is not the intention to, you know, hurt, hurt the district, yes.
Thank you. And then, do you happen to have the numbers on how many subs? Because the contract mentions that most subs work on average less than 30 hours a week. And that's typical, I mean, you know, that's the nature of subs. But do you happen to have the numbers on how many? What's your percentage of subs that require healthcare usually?
I, I would have to find that. You know, most of the subs either have their own insurance through a spouse. So, the numbers aren't as large as you might think, but 20 to 30% of the subs end up wanting and needing. But I could find those numbers for you.
Okay. And then the coverage, is it usually the, a community plan through the ACA or is it a separate group benefit?
It is, it's a minimally essential coverage plan, but it offers it to spouse, family. It's a monthly deduct so that it's an easy one to come out of the employee's paycheck. We can get you the, the name of the, the funding company.
Okay, thank you very much. Board member Goday.
Yes, I just had one quick question that I forgot to ask earlier. Because these are no longer gonna be working for EBR, public schools, will the substitute teachers now be subject to or eligible for social security?
Yes.
Okay, so they will have social security coverage on this. And so, that's another benefit really that, that you didn't really mention in there. Because they don't, they, the way they are now, they're not in our retirement plan, but they also are not in social security. So, this would let them build up social security credit, credits.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't see the social security cost built into the, the spreadsheet where you had, or I guess, is the social security part the 27%?
Yes, it is. It is included.
So, that is actually included in the, the cost of the bill rate?
I just wanted to be clear on that. So, that is another benefit for the substitute teachers.
Yes, sir.
They will be able to, to gain social security credits.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then just real quick for clarity, Ms. Donaldson, please make sure to pull, get, get information directly from the LEE that contracted in Nash, from, from Nashville schools on the amount. How many subs did they bring in, you know, help increase? How long did the contract last and why did the contract end? And just email it to me.
Yes, ma'am. We, we can, I can work with them to get that information and also contact someone in Nashville.
Seeing no other board comment, any public comment?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Renita Witrock, and I just have a quick question. I wanted to find out two things. I didn't hear anything concerning transportation as far as the bus drivers. Are they planning to have the bus drivers start out with subs or?
She did, and we don't take questions, but she, I can answer.
I appreciate that.
I could just mention that she did say that the bus drivers will not be included.
Okay, well, will they eventually? I understand you said no question. Will they be eventually included?
I'll take up the question myself when we come back to board questions. Thank you.
I really, really, really am happy about subs getting higher pay. Because the amount that, that we pay subs is sickening. I like the scholarships. I'm curious as to how much that would cost us in EBR to just do that ourselves. Everything we contract out goes down in quality. You're adding a middleman, you're paying someone a profit, and for what? Do you remember when our custodians worked for EBR, when we knew them? If you've been here long enough, do you remember when the schools were actually cleaned? I think that is probably the most popular example I can use for a contracted out service right now. Now, we outsource to Aramark, who outsources to everybody and their daddy. One week, it might be Janice Care at my school. The next week, it might be Janet King at my school. You never know which week Aramark has outsourced the cleaning at my school. And I'm also curious as to where all these new magical subs are going to come from. I'm a realist. Okay, so let's, let's think about this. You want to know why there's a teacher shortage, why there is a substitute shortage? Because we are treated like crap. We are paid like crap. The people who do this are people who do it because the children are our ministry. We do this because we're going to go down with the children no matter what. The subs that do it, do it because, you know, they've given their life to it. They're normally retired teachers and, and the kids keep them young. But it's not to pay the bills, I'll tell you that. And, and, and Ms. Donaldson is right, McDonald's pays more. So, I'm interested cutting out the middleman. Pay them the amount of that presentation. Give that scholarship. Let's let these children, inspire them to become the teachers that changed their lives. See how much that costs EBR to do it. Why do we need a middleman? Why do we need to contract something else out? Because when we do, it always goes down. Because we're still trying to get rid of Aramark, but here they are. They're still here. And how much do we pay them? Was your trash empty today in your office? Anybody? Anybody? It probably wasn't.
My name is Raymond Allman. I'm a resident voter, homeowner in District 4. I think this is a great contract. I have been here watching this board for 20 years. I have two sons, one 26, one 21. I built a house in Monticello, walking distance from here because of Greenbrier. Had small kids. I was a young parent. I was 23 years old. And my son had a substitute rotating in and out of a kindergarten class. And I took his butt out of Greenbrier and went to U-High, and he graduated from NYU last week. This is a problem. My board members specifically, you couldn't have earned positions for five or four coordinators and stuff a minute ago, and you're having questions about subs. This is dumb. It's a problem. You've been hiring from Kelly, that's a problem, and these people do this. And so, you know, we wasting a lot of time. I understand people don't like substitute teachers. People get sick. You got 6,000 employees. And so, this is a great idea. You know, y'all give it the program. You need people to work. These people gonna help you do it. Vote on it.
Any other public comment? Board member Bernard?
I agree with what Ms. Matthews said. I would like to propose that instead of outsourcing all of our subs 100%, that we do this as a pilot this year and we outsource a certain percentage. I wouldn't suggest that we choose the lower performing schools for this task. I would suggest that we have a mix of schools so that we know better what to expect. I think it's, I think we'll get different results in different locations, for sure. So, I wouldn't want to do it the, the exact way that Nashville did it. I would suggest that we do it another way. But I, I don't want to get us locked into something that doesn't end up well for us. I agree about Aramark. And I also, as a parent of a child with epi pens and asthma inhalers at a very young age, I had serious reservations about outsourcing the medical and nursing care that we, that we did at the time. So, I, I would, I don't want us to go down this road and not be able to come back again. I would like to just try it as a pilot with a smaller percentage of, of the vacancies or of the schools. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other board comment, I would just like to respond and say I can defend every vote I take regardless of who asks the question. And I have a fiduciary responsibility to this school system. And there's a reason why I voted no. Any other board comment? Seeing none, Madam Secretary.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward, Madam Secretary, I need to correct the record because I voted in error. And my, if I correct it, it's not gonna change the outcome, right? So, I just need to correct it.
I'll reopen and everybody can vote again if you ever want.
Thank you. I apologize. I wasn't paying attention.
Revoting.
Same thing, no change, just revoting because I didn't vote the way I intended.
Please vote.
Thank you. All right.
Tremaine. Let me, sorry. The motion carries.
All right, moving forward with item 15, professional services contract. Council of Great City Schools recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Paris School Board and the Council of Great City Schools to provide district departmental audits not to exceed $80,000 to provide. Okay, can I get a motion? Board member Lannis, seconded by Board, Board member Goday. Seeing no, well, I, no other board members have a question? Can I just get some clarity, superintendent, on this one? So, this, this is the same one we doing a membership with, right?
That is correct, Madam Vice President.
So, this is an additional 80,000 on top?
So, the, being a member district of the Council of Great City Schools, which has 76 cities, the, our part of our paying the membership is that we can do audits that they do. There, so they would do an audit in three departments. HR, the ELL Department, and SED Department. We do not pay for the actual audit. They would get member specialists from other cities to come here to Baton Rouge to do a full audit of the school system. And their total cost would not exceed 80,000 for all three audits. When we do an assessment, for example, for special education, just to do that audit alone would cost over $100,000. So, being a member district, we're able to benefit. And this is just one of many ways the district has benefited from being a member of the Council of Great City Schools.
Okay. And do you happen to, so SED, for example, would be like 100,000 and? Do, do you happen to have, do they have like a cost comparison just so we understand how much we benefiting?
Mr. Shallow?
Yeah, we can request that before the next regular meeting. And just to clarify, that total amount, 45,000, you're paying essentially for administrative costs, not the full cost of the actual, what it would cost actually to audit. We can get those numbers for you.
Okay.
And the remaining 30, yeah.
Public information.
I also want to correct for the record, the term of the contract should be through June 30th, 2022, but I'll make that correction before the regular meeting.
Okay. Board member Lannis.
Yes, I just had one question because I'm actually really curious about this. Is it normal practice that we pay for travel, lodging, and meals not to exceed $35,000? Okay. I was just asking because I, I just wasn't aware. So, thank you.
And for clarification, they have to follow our guidelines on travel costs, et cetera.
I'm sorry, say, say that clarifying point again?
They would have to follow our guidelines on travel costs, et cetera.
So, it would keep it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's a good question. Okay. Seeing no other board, request to speak, any public comment? Seeing no, uh, public comment and seeing no further request to speak, Madam Secretary.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Okay, and before we do the meeting announcements, I'll take a moment of personal privilege. I usually, at the beginning of the committee of the whole, just mention the Culture and Diversity Reader. We are in a new month, the month of June. It is Pride Month, okay? So, the rec, the featured books share a diverse perspective on gender. We have A Burst of Light and other essays by Audrey Lloyd that I've completed and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I love Sister Lloyd. I've heard speeches and quotes, but I thoroughly enjoyed that book. I encourage y'all to check it out. Abandon Me Memoirs by Melissa Phibos. How Beautiful the Ordinary, 12 Stories of Identity, edited by Michael Kort. And Redefining Realness, My Path to Womanhood, Identity, Love, and so much more by Janet Mock. And, um, I, you know, again, the idea is to gain diverse perspectives, not even to necessarily, um, agree. Because I, I'm still learning a lot. I consider myself to be an ally, but it's still lots to learn. And so, I encourage you all to learn with me. And with that being said, the announcement of meetings. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Board member Goday.
Yes, again, this is a little bit of a personal privilege, but, you know, this, beginning of this year has been very difficult in Baton Rouge around gun violence and shootings and things like that. It's affected some of our students, it's affected many of our families. And I just wanted to highlight that tomorrow, June 4th, is a day for against gun violence. And I'm, I'll be honest, I'm a gun owner. I'm not necessarily against gun ownership. But it's a day against gun violence and ask everyone to wear orange tomorrow to support the movement against gun violence. Because it is something that is tearing our community apart and it impacts everyone across the entire community. So, if you feel that way and if you feel so moved, please wear orange tomorrow, June 4th. Thank you.
You know what? I have a nice blazer I'm gonna wear at the retiree reception tomorrow with orange in it in support. It's a good one. As a matter of fact, they have some, I'll share with you some gun violence events. I think I saw somebody. I think I saw somebody share in the local community on Instagram, too. Thank you, Board member Godey. Board member Lannis?
Yes, ma'am. This is not a point of public privilege, but I just wanted to just let everybody know, because I think you just hinted to it. Tomorrow, there will be a retiree reception ceremony at Glen Oaks High School, starting at 6:00 PM. We're gonna send all of our retirees off right, I'm sorry? One, I'm sorry, I don't, y'all excuse me. Charge them ahead, number one, 1:00 PM tomorrow, Glen Oaks High School. We're gonna send our retirees off the right way. We're asking anyone that wants to come out, please do. It's gonna be an amazing ceremony. And again, thank our retirees for all of the service and dedication and hard work you've given this district and our school system. We love you and we appreciate you.
All right. Seeing no other requests to speak, announcement of meetings. Our regular meeting to be held on June 17th at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. Committee of the Hold to be held on July, oh, wait. Superintendent, what, what month did you say we were gonna go back? Okay, all right. Wanted to make sure that was right. Okay, Committee of the Hold to be held on July 1st at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. And regular meeting to be held on July 15th at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. And that is it with that.